We're a minute early, but we might as well go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. It's a special meeting of the City of Fort Thomas Planning Commission and Fort Thomas Board of Council to discuss more issues around rezoning. So take it away, consultants. Let us know what we're supposed to do tonight.
So thank you very much for having me here this evening. As the mayor said, this is a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council. Can everyone just hear me?
We came with not doing introductions since we did that in our last meeting. Just kind of speak things out, is that all right?
Yes. Sorry. You're off. Everything is fine. So for tonight, we will start by quickly reviewing the zoning ordinance update process. We will dig into the needed discussion, which is the discussion of specific topics in the draft U D O, which stands for Unified Development Ordinance. We'll be talking about two-family dwellings, the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district, the neighborhood commercial office district, and the central business district as it relates to Town Center and Highway. And then our final topic for discussion is murals. These are all topics that were discussed at the council retreat in May and June, and the council will discuss those topics with the Planning Commission. And then we will end tonight with next steps. As much as you know, I lead this as a discussion, so please feel free at any time to interrupt and ask questions or to add to the conversation. So the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included an analysis of existing conditions as well as a thorough examination of the city's existing zoning and subdivision ordinances. At the end of that phase, we produced a diagnostic report, which is on the city's website. Phase two included creating new revised regulations, and the major changes from your current regulations were fleshed out. We concluded phase two in September of 23, and all of the phase-two drafts were compiled into a single document that is available on the city's website. And as I said, this draft shows how the updated regulations differ from the city's current regulations. Phase three began in January, and on January 11th, we provided a draft of all the proposed amendments. The phase-two draft is also on the city's website, and this draft tracks the changes from the phase-two draft. We are currently in phase four, which started in May. On May 6th, we delivered the first edition of the phase-four draft. At the conclusion of the phase-four is in the adoption process, and then we will deliver a second edition of the phase-four draft shortly, as soon as we resolve the topics that we're talking about tonight. In terms of the adoption process, we will have a public hearing that is required by the Kentucky Remains Codes, and all those folks that are being affected by the rezoning in terms of the map amendments will be notified by mail. Today, we have not set the date for that public hearing. Since January of 23, we have been holding coffee and conversation sessions. Typically, these engagement sessions happen at Fort Thomas Coffee, but tomorrow they will be happening here in this room. They happen from 10:00 to 11:45, and then again from 6:00 to 8:00. So again, the coffee and conversation sessions will be here tomorrow. As you may have gleaned from the agenda topics, we'll be spending most of tonight's discussion on Article Three, which includes the individual zoning districts. I will quickly run through the zoning districts and propose unified development ordinance. And on the screen, you see the existing residential districts. All of the existing residential districts are being retained in the U D O, including the five single-family districts, the one-two-family district, and both of the multifamily districts. There is one additional single-family district, which is the R-1 Town Center that we had discussed previously. Excuse me. Can you move that slightly back there because you're going to have to kind of rumble back there. Thank you. There are four mixed-use and business districts, which includes the central business district with all of its corresponding subzoning districts, the traditional business district, which is the zoning district for Inverness, the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district, and the neighborhood commercial office district. There are two other zoning districts, which are the river preservation district, which exists along the Mary Ingalls Highway, and the conservation district. Both of these districts are existing and are being retained. There is currently one parcel in the city's own conservation district, and it is located at the back of a parcel where Waterworks Road and Taylor Avenue meet. Our first topic to discuss are two-family dwellings in the R-1B, the R-1C, and the R-1TC-1 and two-family districts. In those zoning districts, two-family dwellings are classified as restricted use in the U D O. This change makes all of these existing two-family dwellings conforming uses. Currently, the two-family dwellings are nonconforming in the R-1 district. This change legitimizes these existing two-family dwellings, but does not permit the construction of new two-family dwellings or the conversion of existing single-family homes into two-family dwellings. Today, there are numerous two-family dwellings that are nonconforming uses in the zoning districts, which can negatively impact future improvements to these properties. By making the two-family dwellings restricted uses, these existing two-family dwellings may remain the invested in, but new two-family dwellings are not permitted. At the council retreat back in May, the council discussed the advisability of permitting the expansion of existing two-family dwellings, provided the expansion complies with all applicable development standards. And the council also discussed permitting new two-family dwellings to be constructed on lots that are currently occupied by two-family dwellings. In other words, if there's a two-family dwelling on the site, someone wants to knock it down and put in a new one, they can be permitted to do so. So at that time, the council asked if we could have that discussion with you as to whether or not you would like to permit the expansion of existing two families and the replacement of two families. So I will turn the discussion over to y'all.
Andy, this is kind of great to go on.
Sure. I just thought that with, if you look at a lot, like for example, that one in the picture, I would imagine that each floor is somewhere around 1,000 square feet. So why not, like right now, you can't add on to it. So it would seem to me that you could create a nicer place by maybe turning into a three-bedroom, adding something on to the back to where you actually could add an addition on the two-family, where it stays a two-family, but you're making it a nicer two-family. Now, we're not allowed to do that. What do you guys think about that?
I think the whole point behind legitimizing the two-family dwellings was so you could improve them, and I would think an addition would be a good improvement for those. So, you know, I think that's kind of the point behind what we're doing. The second question, I don't know about, you know, if one burns down or something, if you're allowed to rebuild it, you know, that we can discuss that further. But I think the whole point behind legitimizing those two families that are nonconforming uses now is so they could be improved.
Right. In the, so, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought in the proposed zoning change, you weren't allowed to add on to it.
Really, you're not. I mean, as it's currently drafted.
Right. So I was thinking, but we changed the proposed zoning to allow to add on to it. Like say, add a third bedroom.
We didn't really specify the improvement. I mean, we might have been thinking decks or something like that, but if we don't allow an addition, then what's the point? The whole point behind them being nonconforming, some banks won't loan money on nonconforming uses, who would want to make them perform? But why would you need to loan money if you weren't going to improve it? So yeah, I think, I agree with you. You know, additions, I think that's a good.
Does anybody disagree on this?
I think that's a logical solution for this situation, and now, if it's approved, then they would not have to go to Board of Adjustment. This is just automatic. They'd just have to rebuild it.
Correct.
Perhaps what we do with the, if it's torn down and they want to rebuild, maybe that just comes to, well, we'd have to go to the design review board.
No, it would not.
Would not?
No, it would not.
If it was on the avenue?
If it was on the avenue, it would have to. Right. And if it did burn down, so as it's currently drafted, and if we allow restrictions, if something happened, if it burned down, they could certainly rebuild. But if there was one that would have a lot of disinvestment, and someone wanted to tear it down and replace it, you know, intentionally.
Yeah.
That would not be permitted. And so I think Councilmember Ellison was asking, you know, should, if there is something where that would happen, should we, do we want to permit that? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think we'd want to, so we don't want to encourage fire or something, is it? So, I mean, if you're going to allow it with a burn down, then I would think we would want to consider that as an option.
Do we know the repercussions of value if you were restricted from being put back as a two-family? If it's a two-family now and were to be accidentally destroyed for some reason, you can't build it back, what does that do to the value of the property? Do we have any idea of that?
So that's actually precisely why many mortgage companies won't lend on them. And so what's, as I keep talking about, what's distinguished between nonconforming structures and nonconforming uses? If it's a nonconforming structure, then it can be built back. But if these are not, if they continue to be nonconforming uses, if more, as the code is currently drafted today and in the future, if more than 60% of the replacement value is destroyed, they can't build that nonconforming use back. And so therein lies the issue as to why many mortgage companies, many banks won't loan on them.
But do we know the, do we know how much it would affect, probably not a consistent number, but do we know how much it would affect the property value from going from two-family to a one-family? I guess it all depends if we put it back, so I guess I did not probably know anything about that.
I'm not a real estate agent, but I know people like to invest in two families, and I thought that on a square foot basis, two families were worth more than a single family. But that's just anecdotal. I don't have any basic.
Yeah, I think one of the things, I think one of the things that Andy pointed out that made a lot of sense, Councilman Ellison, is that these structures here, some of them are dated, out of date, and then if you do approve them and allow them to add a third bedroom, increases the value, which increases the clientele you might get in there and costs, so the upkeep on them would be significantly different, I think, as well. You know, some, sometimes they can get run down. I think that's also a benefit, right? So, because somebody that's paying more is expecting more from their property. So I think it's all a great benefit. I think the whole thing's for everybody, the tenant, the client, the city.
So is everybody good with that?
When we talk about it becoming conforming and allowing additions, we're not talking about taking a two-family like this and adding on an addition that allows it to become a three-family.
Correct. It would stay a two-family. A three-family by code is defined as a multifamily dwelling and is prohibited.
So the same would be true if someone, if we allowed it, if someone took this down voluntarily and improved the structure, then it would be a two-family still.
Correct.
Correct.
Alisa, how easy is that language to add?
Easy.
Okay. Is this one way to, is no, open up some of the one-way doors or anything like that?
It would still be a restricted use, yes. Because otherwise, if you made it a permitted use, then you could, then you would be permitting the conversion of existing single-family into two-family, which is not what I think everyone wants. So I think we have a yes to the first question. The second question, do we want to allow them to be replaced? Yes.
They'd mind.
Okay.
Good, move on. I tell you what, crazy stuff, okay? It's your perfect answer.
All right. Any other issues on two families before we move on? So the first nonresidential district that we will discuss is the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district. So the council discussion that they had at the retreat centered on three main issues. The desirability of limiting the number of stories in a building, the maximum building height in the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district, and both subzoning districts is for 10 feet, but the number of stories is not regulated. The appropriateness of allowing residential uses over nonresidential uses, and whether or not a maximum building width should be established.
So what's the difference right now?
Right now, in terms of maximum building width, or there is none established for the Alexandria Pike district. So today, there are three separate nonresidential nodes along Alexandria Pike. Starting at the southern end, there is the area at Hollywood Stride that stretches all the way to Pleasant Avenue. These parcels are zoned today, either professional office, which is shown as P O on the existing zoning map, or general commercial, which is abbreviated as G C. Further north, another cluster of nonresidential uses exists from Woodfield up to Pleasant Lane, excuse me, up to Blossom Lane, and all of these parcels are zoned professional office. The third area starts just beyond the northern Kentucky Water District parcel and stretches to I-471, and includes parcels that are today zoned industrial park, general commercial, and highway commercial. In the southern commercial area, existing uses include an office building in the former grocery store, small office buildings on Hollywood, and homes that have been turned into commercial spaces. And for a little bit of context, the building that houses Taylor Hill Engineering is approximately 250 feet, 55 feet wide. And so throughout this presentation, I'm going to be trying to, at the council retreat, we had a lot of discussion about how tall is this building, or how wide is this building, or how wide is this lot? So we'll be trying to provide throughout this some context. So in this case, as I said, that building is 250 feet, 55 feet wide, based on the weight G I S. In the southern node, you also have Safe Ship, a gas station, and small office buildings. Pictures or a few, pictures or a few photos of the office uses between South Fort Thomas Avenue and Blossom Lane, as well as the one side that is still zoned by industrial park, which houses Marsh Building and also a CrossFit studio, and then the retail usage right before you get to I-471. So the four zoning districts currently along Alexandria Pike will be replaced with the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district, which has two subzoning districts. The Alexandria Pike mixed-use one is shown in blue, and the Alexandria mixed-use two is shown in yellow on the screen. The subzoning districts differ by development standards, but all the permitted uses are the same in both subzoning districts. So I'm going to say that again. They differ by development standards, but the uses are the same. In the A P M X one, parking is prohibited in the front of the buildings, and the placement of a building on the lot is more tightly regulated. In the mixed-use two district, front yard parking is permitted.
So is there any road parking in M X one?
Yeah. So in M X one, which is the area in the southern portion of the district, front yard parking is prohibited.
Why wasn't, you know, the top, why did it stop there with, for example, why is the Fort Thomas, I guess Plaza is what it's called? Why was that not included in this?
So at the time when we originally started these discussions, it was, we were trying to create a district that was comprehensive along Alexandria Pike, and the nature of the district changes once you cross I-471 was the thought process at the time. So now that we have reviewed the existing built environment and proposed zoning, let's return to the issues to consider. Should there be a limit on the number of stories in the building? Should residential uses be permitted over nonresidential, and should a maximum building width be established? We have provided some options for your consideration, including tailoring the development standards and uses by subzoning district. For example, only permitting residential uses over nonresidential in the M X one subzoning district, which is the southern portion of the district. And then permit residential uses over nonresidential as a restricted or a conditional use. And those standards could be things such as limiting the number of stories or establishing a maximum building width when you have residential over nonresidential. And then, just to refresh you, if it's a conditional use, it goes in front of the Board of Adjustment instead of the Planning Commission, and the Board of Adjustment does have a leeway as a conditional use to have site-specific conditions placed against it. So, would it be beneficial to tailor to development standards and uses by subzoning districts, or to permit residential over nonresidential as a restricted or a conditional use with the types of standards I just mentioned? So I'll turn the discussion over to y'all.
Is this the one we keep talking back and forth?
Uh, this is one of them, yeah.
At the minute, I would think we wouldn't make it a conditional use, so it would have to have more implications. I think we want a lot of it all.
Yes, okay. So let's start with that. Let's start with limiting the number of stories in the building. Is that something that you want to do? The height is regulated, and it can be no more than 40 feet.
We have a number of offices and houses on the other side of the street here in the Z B D. Are we going to create them as nonconforming, existing nonconforming uses if we limit the number of stories to two? Because most of those are three, like Tender Insurance.
Right.
It might not be in the zone, but that's three. The Shown Kitchen place, that's, that's three stories. I mean, we've gone back and forth about, you know, is the height the only important thing, or is the number of stories the important thing? It seems to be the height restrictions more important than the number of stories.
So this, these questions really only apply to the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district. And then we will hit the issue of the central business district, and precisely those two buildings in a few minutes.
We still have a lot of houses that are three stories, and it seems odd to only allow two-story buildings in our commercials, and we have three-story houses.
I agree with your assessment that the building height is probably more of an issue than how many stories there are. Because a lot of times, because we're on the hill, people can build and have a, you know, a little bit of a low-grade level and end up with three stories, but it goes two stories from the front, or two and a half stories. I think the building height is probably a more important aspect. And short of that, again, if there's a way to make, go back and forth and adjust, at least there's a review of it, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I guess I would just say, what's the purpose of limiting the number of stories? Are we trying to keep residential out? Is that just so that we can't have two floors of residential above, or, you know, otherwise?
I think that's exactly it. I think that's exactly it. I haven't heard a single person say, let's increase density. So my question is, has anybody in this room heard from anybody that they want to increase density? Anybody?
No.
So that, to me, that answers it. Two stories.
Yeah. Look, I'm sorry.
I think that's a part of it as well.
But you're just talking two stories for residential. What about, what about three stories for commercial?
I'm not, we're not talking about residential, like for example, right now, we're talking about this.
Alexandria Pike.
Right?
That's what you just said, right?
But why, why around the bush then? Why not just say no residential?
That's a great idea.
I mean, and then don't limit this number of stories. Don't limit.
I think that's a fantastic idea, and that's, I believe, how it was forever until 2019.
No, that is not true.
Oh, okay.
In the professional office district, which some of these parcels are zoned.
Oh, yeah, I was considering the G C.
In the professional office district, residential over nonresidential has been permitted since at least 2012. And David's saying before that as well, but it, at least it's been in place since.
In general, commercial was changed. That's the one that was changed in 2019?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that's a, I think that's a great point. Why don't we just say no residential over the commercial?
If that's what you're trying to accomplish with the.
I think that's what the whole town wants.
Yes.
I haven't heard a thing. Unless somebody knows of somebody, or their, or a sentiment from anybody that wants more density, let's hear it. I haven't heard a single person.
So when that was, if I might say, when that was changed, just as some background, I did the report on it, there is currently, in some of your G C zones, such as down in Inverness, such as over at Highland and Grand, there are currently residential over commercial and general commercial. So the thought process was, it's already, when it changed, it's already in some of these areas, why, why have a problem adding it? That was, that was the justification.
We could just say, anywhere that it exists, it's allowed to exist.
It's a water bother, yes.
And just no more news.
What's going on about the Alexandria Pike area?
Right, right.
So let's just concentrate on that.
That's a great idea.
So, you know, can you make that one just right now, nonresidential, and then we'll talk about the other ones when we get to.
I think I'm on board for that. Is everybody else on board for that?
I think that's a good way to handle it. Focus on that district, and I agree with what Andy said. I mean, we've, we've, we've battered this thing around for a while, and there's a lot of opportunities, but I haven't heard anybody who wants more residential over commercial out there, and, and, you know, so for that district in particular, I'd be fine with limiting it for.
I guess I just have one question. So in professional office, have you ever been approached by anyone, anybody with the expectation that they could develop residential over an office?
I guess my one example is. You know, I know some people that, like Josh and I talked about, and like, okay, we're going to put his office on bottom and live on top. Would that, I guess, be a problem for the owners of the thing?
Yes, that would be prohibited by this.
In this area?
I mean, I guess that's.
There's other buildings to talk about.
Especially one example I can think of where it could be a.
I think it limits your performance on an office building if you could be prohibiting residential entirely. And, you know, part of the, part of the.
I don't think we're worried about somebody's performance.
Well, the property owners are.
I think, just so that everybody understands here, I'm just the voice of the citizens of Fort Thomas.
I understand.
And they all want more density.
Yeah, well, I guess the flip side of that is, you've been permitted to do that for 20 years, and if the developer, if the market was there and there really had strong interest, it would have happened by now.
So can they come back with a proposal? So you're saying you're.
No, they can, because it would be.
They can change anything.
So they could after a zone, they would have to do a text amendment to modify the zoning ordinance.
But again, a developer cannot request a text amendment under K R S. It has to be something that comes from, from the community. I mean, that comes from staff or the Friday Commission. So they, it is not a situation where a developer could come into you and ask you to change the text.
Well, can we talk that through real quick, just how that would look hypothetically? So let's say that we prohibited residential above commercial in this district, since that's what we're talking about. And you have a developer who comes next year, two years from now, and has a plan that includes residential over commercial. They can't, if I'm understanding you correctly, they can't ask for a text amendment, but they would come to the city, the city would be aware of their proposal, right? And then it would be discussed amongst, I'm guessing, Planning Commission, potentially us, Board of Adjustment, and we would be the ones to bring up a text amendment if we felt it was appropriate. So I don't see any, any problem with that. I mean, it doesn't.
You can theoretically, I guess the problem with this, if you're trying to find, make a finding of fact, say, you're, you're in the room, it would be very difficult for the city to come back and, or even know we changed our mind, when two years before you articulated why you shouldn't. So I think you're effectively closing that door, essentially.
Yes.
And, and, you know, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, the people that have that expectation today, that they have that possibility, you're taking it away. And I just want you to recognize that, that's all.
I think the entire town, all the residents, want this. So I think, does anybody disagree with?
Yes.
I don't necessarily disagree one way or the other, I'm just saying, if you are a property owner that owns one of those properties, you're taking something.
Well, let's keep this in mind too. I mean, I, I agree with what Andy's saying, and we've heard it from the community a lot too. You know, so when we pass something, let's say in the fall, this is evaluated every five years, right? And so.
No.
It's evaluated how often?
This is the first time this would have changed in 25 years.
Yeah.
This particular section.
This particular section.
It can be reevaluated every year.
Well, so my point is, I guess, we can gauge the level, if there's any interest in development with residential over commercial, we can always gauge the level of interest there might be, and as a community, decide, you know, we have no interest, or we have a ton of interest, and maybe this should be something we should reconsider at that time.
Right. Doing it this way basically says we're not allowing for mass development of residential over nonresidential, but there is a pathway, if somebody does want to do it. Well, there really isn't technically a pathway, but they could, I mean, it's the same as any other just change, essentially. They could come and request that the city make a text amendment, and the city would have to initiate that. My concern is, one of the really good things we've done with this ordinance is eliminate a lot of nonconforming uses. So I would like us to do the same thing we did with existing two families, if we have existing commercial, and this is not just, this is all these zones, if we have existing residential over commercial, to somehow allow those as conditional uses, so we aren't creating a bunch of nonconforming uses.
I would totally agree with that, because of that reason, but also because at that point, you're not, you're still not allowing additional density, right? I mean, it's, you also don't want to hose the current property ownership.
Right. And what, I guess, one thing, you know, to Tim's point, what is the specific question about additional density? What is the concern?
We don't want it.
The bottom line is, nobody wants it. So I don't know that.
But I guess what, what's the reasoning behind that?
I think there's a lot of reasons. I think schools, our infrastructure can't handle a lot more traffic, you know, there's already getting backed up in the center of town with degrees. I've flipped at the school system many a times over and over again. I know there's been a lot of arguments about what we can and cannot handle. Probably have the paperwork in here. It's not a lot, and it's naturally growing on its own. Is there an argument for more density?
No, I'm just asking, why is there an argument against it?
I didn't, yeah, I thought I told you.
I guess from, from an infrastructure standpoint, Alexandria Pike currently has 25% of the traffic that it had in the 1970s, half of the traffic it had in the 1990s. So it's not a matter of infrastructure.
But also, that traffic turns into Port Thomas, too. Not just that street alone, right?
Excuse me, I need to say something. When Alexandria Pike had four lanes when that got, it only has two lanes. I think that needs to be...
I hope nobody else thinks it's appropriate to, to stand up and speak when this is not the opportunity. It was Monday. Please, go ahead.
And to your point, the reason it has two lanes is because it has half the traffic it used to.
Is there...
I'm, I'm on board with the commercial. So, on the commercial.
Would it be then, first floor could be retail or, you know, office, you know, commercial? And then you'd have a second story, but it just couldn't be retail, right?
Correct, correct. So you could have a two-story office.
Because there's still 40, 40 feet of the current proposal.
You have 40 feet.
Throughout the district.
Yeah, throughout the district.
Your comment, you're about trying to get buildings to comply, whatever. Do we have any existing in these two zones that we're discussing that have residential above?
My recollection is along Alexandria Pike, you do not have any residential over non-residential.
So we may not have an issue with this particular zone?
I will look closer to make sure.
I just look through.
I don't believe we, there are, there are any.
But if there was, we could write it so that if you have existing already that's being used, we could...
Correct.
And then just, just to close the loop, we, I agree with Eric, but we need to consider also the circumstance where there's commercial with residential above, God forbid it burns down. Are they going to be able to rebuild something like that?
No.
And, well, that's something we need to talk about.
Why can't we write it to where they can?
We could. I mean, but as we're talking about, along Alexandria Pike, as we know, as we think right now, there is no residential over non-residential. We could say, if it exists today, similar to what we did with the two families, that it would be a restricted use and it could continue, in which case if it burned, at that point, it becomes a conforming use. And if it burns down, they could then rebuild. That is something we can build in, just in case we miss something along the pipeline.
And I guess, one, just in terms of the traffic, you shouldn't realize that, in terms of, in terms of traffic demand, if you have a two-story office building versus a one-story office and one-story residential, the two-story office is going to carry more traffic.
Yes, absolutely.
So your, so the infrastructure argument from a residential really doesn't play out in terms of that?
Well, you know, I've had discussions with the school system, too, personally, a couple of times. And we're, you know, we're not maxed out yet, but we're, you know, a couple hundred kids from that. So I think what we're trying to do is not completely stop all, you know, residential development in, in all places in the city, but somehow control it so that we don't have, you know, unintended consequences for...
I mean, we, we've added approximately 260 housing units since 2000 in the city, and about 600 residents in that time period. So the majority of the increases in the enrollment of the store aren't really directly attributable to the number of housing units. In fact, in fact, the majority of Port Thomas families, at this point, there's, there's almost as many households in the city that don't have children as there's that do. So it's not a one-to-one correlation necessarily, just...
At some point, it's going to turn over, then we're going to have to...
Actually, from a census standpoint, the Kentucky State Data Center is actually forecasting forecom population is going to decrease over time.
Having the last 20 years.
Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't decreased, but it hasn't increased significantly.
A thousand people...
We don't want it to increase.
600. It's increased, it's increased about 600 since 1970.
No, since 1970, it was a height, and then it went down for the last 20 years, it's the top speed. So, I don't know, I want to go back to the year, not the actually, not the last 20 years, it's serious. We look it up in 10 years. It's a lot.
We've actually lost 350 people in the past five years. Because, and a lot of that's because of just natural attrition. There's less, the fertility rates are less than the death rates, and you're essentially losing population.
All right, so what I'm...
Regardless, I'm not, not going to get sidebar tracked.
All right, so what I've heard is that we're going to prohibit residential over non-residential. We will put a clause in that says, if there is something existing, it can remain. Is there anything else that we need to do? And do we want to limit the number of stories? Yes or no? Because now that we have said no non, no residential, is there a benefit to limiting the number of stories?
Well, let me ask you a question about it. Now, we've talked about this before. So, so currently, it's 40 feet, right?
That's what it's called, right now. Right now, it's 50. But in the draft, it's 40 feet, yes.
40 feet. And so, I mean, I apologize for, because I've asked this before. So 40 feet, can you get a solid three stories without a flat roof?
So, like, for example, the building at 20 Grand North Grand is a three-story building that is about 40 feet tall. The reality is, that building was built a long time ago. And usually today, given the height of first floors and all the HVAC system and all those kinds of things, most people would not, it would not be Class A office space if you put three stories in a 40 sto, a 40-foot building.
How tall is this building? Does either top, this would be...
I don't know off the top of my head. It's probably 30...
Second floor, three stories.
So if we do start limiting stories, we are going to have to define how to measure that, for example, because there are many buildings in town that are three stories at the back and two stories at the front. So we will have to define how we measure that, because of a lot of hills. But I would guesstimate this building is probably 37, 35 feet, something like that.
For this particular zone, I don't think we need to worry about the, the stories and stick with height, right?
Okay.
Especially with commercial, there could be various different reasons they have different levels depending on what they're...
Yeah, and, and if they're doing research and labs, the ceiling heights are much higher than they are in other situations like you. There are buildings that are being built today that's for R and D that are 40 feet high in one story. So, I'm not sure, now that we've eliminated the residential over non-residential, that the number of stories is important. So that's the question I'm thinking about.
At 40 feet, does anybody even come non-conforming that's current?
No.
In this district?
In that, in this district, no.
So you'll need to one and two, or can they be the same?
So we would still, the development standards are different between the two, between the two sub-zone districts, the kind...
Sorry, forgot to mention that first.
All right, so, no limit on the number of stories now that we've gotten rid of residential, is that correct?
No, for 40 feet.
For 40 feet, yeah.
I, is there, like, what does everybody think on council about keeping it, or making it two stories?
Versus, if you add in the stories instead of the...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not as concerned about, you know, height, a 40-foot height, I don't want 50, but 40 here versus 35, because I don't see the corridor effect, like I, like I'm concerned about it in the, you know, the midway in the central district here. Right, you don't have another 40-foot building on either two sides, right? So, I'm, I'm less concerned about a 40-foot building in this district.
Yeah, if Marshall wanted to rebuild and add another store and keep it under 40 feet, people would care. Specifically for this, this dump, these two zones.
Specifically this zone. Yeah, your question was about stories versus feet, right? So, I agree with Eric, I also agree with you, but it's, the 40 feet is, I, I would say it's appropriate here, but the stories, I'm good with being limited at two or not. Because you can't put more than two in 40 feet anyway.
They get a 10%, 10% variance, we get 40 more.
Again, that 10% is only if they are extenuating circumstances. Be that there is an error that was unanticipated or something unique about the property. It is not something that they are given automatically.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that really quickly, because we've talked about it a few times. So you can't come at the beginning of the process and say, you know, say it's 40 feet, and you can't say, "I'm going to put plans out there to say it's 42 feet, you know, from the beginning, that's my design."
Correct.
So already over. It has to come on the back end.
More than likely, it would come at the back end. And, but there may be a situation, for example, when they say, because of how we measure height, it's going to be 41 feet in the beginning, as the zoning administrator may at that point allow it. But in 99.9% of the situations, is a situation where something happens as a result of an error at the end of the process, that would then give the zoning administrator the ability to do that.
Can we go in something that if it is in the front end, that it goes, maybe one or two levels of approval as opposed to...
So we could say that. We could, we could limit the waiver until the back end. And if it's a funding, it has to be a, I'm sorry.
You need a fund at the back end.
So at the time, at the time of, with the requesting of zoning compliance.
So they, yeah, they just request it in their initial request, it's just activated on all the research, is what we said.
So for, except the example I gave previously, which is a bad grading situation. And so instead of having a 40-foot building, they have a 41-foot building, then the zoning administrator would then be allowed to give them that 41 feet, as opposed to going to the Board of Adjustment. That is typically how it happens. It's when it happens, it happens when they, when they're asking for a certificate of zoning compliance, and then they realize that they are off at that point.
But can we limit that to see your, your design up front is for less than the stated height limit?
So we can say, as, that the waiver is only applicable at the time that they are requesting a certificate of zoning compliance, which would mean, that at the beginning, they have to be 40 feet. Three stories.
And let me ask those, too, because I thought about this over the last week or so. And I, there's, I know there's some concern in the community about, I, I don't have any issue with the 10% variance, if it meets the requirements. I know there's some concern about that decision coming down to one, the zoning administrator, regardless of who it is. Just because it's a single person who's unelected, I get that. I mean, it's a, instead of going to the zoning administrator, for example, could that variance decision go to the Board of Adjustment?
If we take it out, then it will automatically go to the Board of Adjustment. And so then what that means, in that situation where it's, it was a grading mistake, then that means they can't occupy their building until the VLA acts, which may be a problem for them in terms of their financing, for example. They're trying to convert their construction financing to permanent financing. They can't do that if they don't have a building, a certificate of occupancy and a certificate of zoning compliance. Therefore, they're in a lurch. And if you tell them they've got to wait 30 days, they can, or 60 days, it can be a problem.
Why is it 60, man?
Well, it depends on when it lines up.
It depends on how it lines up.
You gotta, you gotta get it on the board, and so typically, it'll be 60 days, or 40 to 60 days.
I can't imagine this happening after a certain meeting, for me, 30 days, I'm confused why it's 60.
Right, but it has to be submitted in a certain time, enough time to evaluate. So generally, you're not going to meet, it's rare that you're, they actually hit the next one.
I'm curious, when do you, when, when do they act? That's just me personally, how, how, much prior to the...
Well, for something like that, it's 20 days, so we have enough time to evaluate it.
I mean, so there is no stipulation in our, that it has to be 20 days? You kind of just...
No, we have, there, in our, I'm, I'm assuming that that was conveyed over, but it's 20 days in our current ones.
Our coordinates is they have to...
It, it, something like that, we need to, to submit 20 days.
I mean, I can't imagine it happens very often in town.
It doesn't happen very often. But obviously, it's happened often enough that I could tell you right off the top of my head how it happens. So it, it happens occasionally.
So when that, if that came up for some reason, I mean, to be, they could meet, you know, what you call it, special meeting or whatever it might be to consider something like that, so someone doesn't have to wait?
So now, I would turn that to Kevin, as to how, how would you call a special meeting?
I mean, if we were going five days a month, I could see where that's an issue, but I don't, that's...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, I think we would still want the, enough information in adequate time. So I don't know that we would... We probably could call a special meeting. The problem is, you know, the planning commission, they have certain days that they work around with their calendar, so it's, it's difficult to get a special meeting.
And you still have to advertise it. Right, I know, you gotta advertise. I just, I don't think six weeks is that long for them to wait for this decision either. I like, I like Ben's suggestion, you know, but I don't think, if someone's going to do the development, is six weeks too long and they don't...
I, I, you certainly can take it out, but what I'm telling you is, it can be an issue when they're trying to convert from construction financing to permanent financing if they can't get their certificate of zoning compliance.
Seems pretty difficult in other, in not just work constrained by working other municipal counties, too. But is that similar with municipal counties at that time?
Some, some do and some don't. It can go either way. And I am perfectly willing to pull it out if you would, and say that they are, the zoning administrator could only give administrative modifications for everything except height. But that would, that would make you more comfortable.
Well, I'm just, I want everyone's opinion on it. It's just that, in my mind, it was a way to get around just having one individual make that decision. And I understand the need for time on both sides. Time to evaluate, but also, you know, time to make a more easy decision from somebody else's perspective who needs financing. So I don't know what the best way to do that is. And it, it's just a thought, basically. I'm curious what your opinions are.
I like the thought, I mean, if we had it that way and it became an issue, then...
Kevin, do you have any input on it? I mean, we, we can do it that way, and if it becomes an issue, we can bring it up in the future and say, "This is a scenario why this really hurt the situation." Unless Kevin has any party, I mean...
I mean, the flip side is, I mean, if it's a, if it's a forefront differential, I know, and to your point, I mean, Kevin's not a, not like an official, but you, you, you know, by, you know, his qualifications and his experience, a forefront decision, is that really material? I mean, I, I'm not saying it is or isn't.
Yes, yes, yes.
We hear that it is, like, obviously.
You hear it. Well, I mean, what do you think?
I didn't hear it, right.
Well, people...
I'm just, I want to get this to a place where we're all comfortable and have something and, because it's important. And I want to go the right way, too, so I know that's kind of a, maybe a catchphrase, too, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm, I'm less concerned about that in this zone, and we're still talking about...
I'd say I'm less concerned about this zone, this is over the whole of our state.
If we're 40, you can see, we can do that, I'm less concerned about it.
All right, so let's, let's try to bring the conversation back to this. So, and we'll, we'll get to the zoning administration, not ignoring that. Yes or no, we want to limit the number of stories in the Alexandria Pike district? Yes.
So, so one thing, just to talk about that a little bit more before a decision is made. So I'm hearing that, oh, you can't build three stories in 40 feet. So what we're saying is two stories, correct?
Yes.
So why not just say two stories?
They could build, so if, like, maybe the second or third floor is storage for them, they don't necessarily need a 10-foot roof, you know what I mean? So it's possible, is what.
Like, what I thought is, if I was a developer and I wanted to get three stories into a zone that, say, was 40 feet, let's say it was measured from the street, well, you exit, you drive in, you go down five feet, all of a sudden, you got three stories.
Which, I don't have a problem with that in commercials.
So the other thing we can do is we can make it two and a half stories, which does give them that storage on the top if you would like to go there. But we are going to have to define how to measure stories and if that's what we're going to, that is the decision we want to make.
Two and a half. I'd say just do the height number. Residential, we'll get to hopefully tonight. But in the differences on the number of stories and the heights of buildings that for a commercial use is very different.
I mean, to get back to the, kind of, the density question again, well, are you concerned about office space occupancy and employers, employees within the structure or?
That's intensity, correct?
Right, so that's what I was saying. So then, you know.
And that gets back to what I said at the very beginning of the meeting. I haven't heard anybody, not a single person arguing for intensity or density.
But in the circumstances, you say you had a use where, Eric said, where you have storage upstairs, do you care?
Not really.
So then, so then, why not just leave it at the height? Because.
Well, the definition of, say, like, say if you did have two and a half stories. So that half story can be a maximum of 60 foot, 60% of the footprint of the building, correct?
No, 60% of the floor area, of the floor directly beneath.
So, you know, which would be the footprint of the building?
Not necessarily, because if it has an atrium in the middle of it or something like that, it would not be the footprint.
Okay, okay. So anyway, you could potentially use 60% of the footprint of the building.
Correct.
So it's kind of like a third story.
So you're talking about two and a half stories?
No, that was just something that was just brought up.
I like the two and a half stories. I'm fine with two or two and a half. Yeah, I like two personally.
I like two personally, but, you know, two and a half would be a, you know, something to think about. This is the fourth draft.
My concern is, you know, you either want to limit height or you want to limit stories. Let our architects and folks that develop these buildings use their creativity or whatever to make these spaces usable for the commercial purpose and then also so they fit in architecturally and contextually within our community, right? So what you're trying to do is, if you're worried about the height of a building, then you're limiting your stories, you're also going to limit the uses and how someone can lay that building out and make it look good or nice and fit into the community. So I would, as the council, I would recommend either pick either stories or pick height.
Should we do it at 35 feet?
I agree with you.
Me, too. I think it's a very valid point.
People in the town, because this is about the residents, this isn't about a developer building a building, that they want two stories. They don't want more. They don't want two and a half stories.
And I think you could do 35 feet.
I would caution that we, that before we make that decision, we do some closer analysis on the buildings that are out there right now.
I think we keep kicking the can down the road. This is the third time we talked about it.
So I think if you would like to limit the number of stories, we certainly can do that, but I would be cautious about reducing the height so dramatically from 50 feet, which it is currently, to 35 feet without.
So we do 40 feet and two stories, and we don't have to kick this can down the road anymore and come back?
I think not.
I think that answers everything. I'm fine with 40 and 30. If the man is considered a story.
I still think that for this particular commercial zone on Pike 27, limiting the height makes all the sense in the world. Making any comment about stories makes no sense for a commercial building, in my opinion. And I think we ought to leave it at that.
What's everybody's opinion over here? Don't you go down the road? We're going to keep going back and forth about this. Eric, what do you think?
I'm okay with 40. Again, we don't have residential, so we're not an intensity issue. It's an intensity issue, which, again, out on the outskirts of the city, there on the bar side, you know, it's not as, it's a different animal to me versus the C V.
Maybe two stories, though. How do you feel about two stories?
Two.
I would go, I mean, I don't, I'm sort of indifferent, but I don't have any problem with 40 feet and two and a half to look to for some flexibility. We're taking away property rights and so, you know.
I'm 40 feet and I'm 40 feet, two stories, you know what I mean? So, yeah.
This isn't that, is it? Really, I just have a full game of what, don't get out of that, but 40 feet, I'm fine with, especially along that corridor, I think it was, that was already there. And a half story, I don't even hear it there in my mind, but if you think it would help with the intensity, then yes, let's just have it.
Keep in mind, too, I mean, if we're, we're making some dramatic progress as far as what we hear from the community, which I think is really a great thing. So I appreciated your comments and I think there's a lot to it. I'm not an architect, obviously. 40 feet, I think, is great. And non-residential is going to be a big win as far as I think the public's concerned. And I think that, so beyond that, I don't know that we necessarily need to worry about the number of stories. And if we do, I would be cautious about limiting it to simply two, because I think that does hamstring, substantially hamstring, you know, the opportunities for what that building looks like and what even a half story can be. And half stories, and I don't want to get off the subject, because we're talking about a different zone here, but when we get to the C V D, I mean, most of these buildings have half stories, including our office building, and some of those are residential uses currently. And at our office building, there's a half story on the third floor, there are two offices, I guess. And so, you know, that's something that I think needs to be considered. Limiting it to 40 feet, non-residential, really checks a lot of boxes for me, without limiting numbers.
We're also, when we talk about property rights and property values, we're, in the P L, it's 50 feet or five stories right now, isn't it? So we're all, we are restricting stuff. I mean, that's what, and that's what the sentiment of the city is restricted, to keep it the same.
All right, so how about 40 feet, two and a half stories? Does that work for everyone?
I think if you're concerned about the height, you're concerned about the height.
So we have two, two stories.
I'm more concerned about the intensity than I am the height.
We're almost in roll call here. We're not going to get through this because we're not.
We're not rolling.
We're not on a roll call, but I mean.
We can move on to the next subject, you know, if we're not, we all don't have.
This is a moving conversation, so I just want to say, because.
We're not coming back to meetings again, are we?
It depends on how this progresses tonight.
Because I thought this was the last one of these, and then we're not even having another council meeting on this, right? Are we?
Again, it depends on how all of this progresses.
As we can, we can do this how, how we want to craft it, but I do want to just say once, because it's getting a little bit irritating to me, we can't just put people on the spot and say, you want two and a half stories, two stories? Because it's a moving conversation.
Five minutes ago, you said you wanted to do what the people wanted to do, and now with 40 feet, no restrictions.
Exactly, 40 feet, no restrictions.
So it's what you just said.
The restrictions are.
40 feet, no residential, 40 feet, and no, no, no.
So Andy, you're concerned about intensity. I don't, you know, I'm more concerned on the real estate side than the feet. Does going from two to two and a half, does that significantly increase intensity to the point? I mean, I don't know.
It depends on the spread of the building.
If it's a really big building, it's, it's a third story. Well, folks, I agree. I think we need to move on. Why don't we move on from now with the decision with the 40 and two and a half? And then we can move to that.
Yeah, we get the final say, right? Correct? So we're going to be perfunting if they knew what we'd like.
Absolutely. We've already discussed it. We don't, we're not going to do a roll call vote.
I mean, not a roll call vote, but I just thought it was nice that we went through. I missed what you said. You said it's their decision to what?
Planning and zoning is their decision to present to us this document when it's final. These opportunities for us to discuss together just helps all of us make the right decisions. And I think this has been a good conversation. We're kind of split on the 40 feet height. That seems kind of a unanimous decision here, and that's a good thing. Again, on a commercial space, I don't think floors make a difference. Some other people feel the same way. You all discuss it and decide what you want to do with it and make a presentation to us when the thing's done. It'll be a different conversation when we get to residential.
And in addition to that, 40 and no residential.
Those are the two main things that.
What about the 10% that we decided from?
So we haven't come back to that yet. I was trying to.
Can that be done by zone?
Yes, theoretically, it could be.
I would prefer.
But I think that's confusing. I think it would be a better situation to either allow the zoning administrator to allow administrative modifications to height or not universally. It would be a difficult administration to have to constantly remember whether he has that authority.
Unless it was commercial.
Correct. You could do it that way. That would be, if you start doing it by zoning district, it would be a tough thing to administer, unless. So let's, so what I'm, what I, unless I hear otherwise, the draft that goes from the planning commission and ultimately comes to you for this district will be 40 feet, two and a half stories, and no residential over non-residential. That's what I've heard. And as Tom and I were just discussing, you know, if this ultimately comes to you and you want to do something differently, you could do that. If the planning commission, when it comes in front of them to make a recommendation, says we would like to do something else, that can happen as well, and that will be noted when it moves forward to you. Does all of that make sense?
Yes.
It does. Have we decided on the two and a half stories? I think I'm still against any story restriction in this zone.
We need to talk about it.
Okay, so then.
I mean, if that's our decision, then.
Well, my take on it in the conversation, I think we're pretty split on that, too, really, as far as whether we include stories or not, so.
Right, but Lisa was saying that she had heard we're going to do two and a half.
No, I had said that's how I was going to draft it at the point of conversation.
Come back to you guys and you'll decide.
And they don't, they don't point it to them. But like, we drafted the, which is 40 feet and no story limitation.
That would be my preference.
What I'm hearing nonetheless is that this is still a moment of contention. In fact, both bodies, there is a, there is a consensus. So why don't we leave the regulating the number of stories undetermined in the next draft? And if we do end up coming back to the other again for another meeting, we will continue those conversations. How does that?
Is there some?
There is no story limit now, except for the professional office district, which has an odd standard that says 50 feet and/or five or six stories. And I don't know how you would have ever gotten the number of stories in 50 feet. But interestingly enough, the current zoning ordinance does allow the planning commission to waive height in the professional office district and in no other district. So again, how all of that ended up in your current zoning ordinance, I don't know. So, all right, so this is what we're doing. No residential over non-residential, 40 feet, and unresolved is whether or not we regulate stories. Okay.
Lisa, everything you said was great. For maybe the help of both the boards, would it be helpful to show what these facilities might look like? You know, I mean, when you tell me two and a half stories, I don't, I can, I understand it seemed like there was some kind of questioning, but we'll understand that would look like.
So we actually have a slide further on that shows an existing building in town that is two and a half stories. So you can see that, and that would be helpful.
Okay, 134, it looks like there's a couple examples all tied.
All right. Do we now want to talk about the administrative modification for heights? Yes or no?
Sir, we said it one more time.
Do we want to talk about the administrative modification?
I like it more on the board.
Well, let's talk about it. So one thing I think is probably the right way to do it is, as you said, I agree with you, said, Lisa, not to skew it, let's make it, you know, citywide. We don't need necessarily, unless somebody thinks that it's better to have different, somebody, have it go to a different person for residential uses versus commercial, which I don't know why it would be. So then, you know, I mean, what's everyone's thoughts? I just know that there has been pushback about that decision being made by a single person, regardless of who it is. It could be made by Board of Adjustment without, like, I hate to use the term, I won't, without screwing the, you know, any potential, somebody building something there as far as timeframes go. And maybe there's even a better alternative. Maybe it's not good of Board of Adjustment. I don't personally think it should come to council.
So does not want to be left with the zoning administrator, it needs to go to the B O A.
What about 5%? Does that help?
Certainly, that is an option as well. I mean, you could say 10% for all the other standards and 5% for height. That is something that could be done as well.
Or could you say it goes to the Board of Adjustments unless there's some sort of extenuating circumstances that are going to cause undue burden on the, you know, cause the thing to completely collapse and then the zoning administrator.
Because they're always loving to.
Yeah, that's, that's something we want.
If we eliminate to 5%, it would automatically go to the B O A. Because T L S 100 requires that any variance goes to the B O A unless it's otherwise defined in the code. So that's an option. We could either completely eliminate the zoning administrator's ability to give a height variance, or we could say 5%.
I don't, I mean, 5% would be automatically go to the B O A, you know, and they couldn't do 10?
No, the 5% would be at the discretion of the zoning administrator.
I'm sorry, I got confused there.
That's okay, because it's, the conversation's going all the way.
I guess maybe I missed it somewhere, but it has always been the Board of Adjustments.
Correct.
It's changing to the zoning administrator. Has there been an issue with it in the past?
That would be a question I would ask to Kevin.
I mean, we had multiple occurrences where this is happening. I mean, why, what's the impetus for the change in the first place?
I don't know that we've had significant issues with height.
So again, if we left it as a B O A and if we, the Board of Adjustments, and we have, if we do somehow run into, you know, multiple situations down the road, then we can always change it at that.
Why? Just asking Lisa, there is no height restriction in an office today. You can make it taller if you want. So there's no need for the Board of Adjustment to reprocess to that.
To that.
But we are adding it. Right, but I'm saying, so there's not a history of, they've had waivers because there was no need to.
I see what you're saying.
You can build a 100-story building if you want height.
I think 5% makes sense. If it's a 40-foot maximum, that's two feet, you know? Is it worth going to B O A for two feet? You know, I think that makes sense. I think that makes sense. Yeah, why can't you make this one? Two feet, really?
I mean, in part, that's why you can hire. I mean, that's, that's.
All right, 5%, 10% for the other standards, 5% for height. Does that make sense for everyone?
We don't agree.
All right. Anything else about outside of your pipe before we move on? So we are moving on to the neighborhood commercial office district. This is the only commercial mixed-use district that is not place-based, meaning that it is use-based, and but it was some regulations to mitigate some of the impacts from some of the uses. So for example, drive-through facilities are a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial office district, and they have to have a minimum lot area of an acre, which will limit where it can go. So based on the discussions at the council retreats, there are several issues to discuss tonight. The limited maximum height currently in the draft is 50 feet, basically because that is the current height in the general commercial and professional office district.
Way too high.
The appropriateness of residential over non-residential, and the advisability of incorporating a maximum residential density if you decide to allow residential over non-residential. And so again, so the neighborhood commercial office district is currently being proposed at Fort Thomas Plaza, which is currently zoned general commercial, at Highland and Grand, which is currently zoned a general commercial and professional office, and at 600 South Fort Thomas Avenue at Divak, which is currently zoned a professional office. The neighborhood commercial office district will also be used at 2,000 Memorial Parkway, which is today the veterinary clinic. And then 1960 Memorial Parkway, which will be zoned neighborhood commercial as well, but today, and that today currently has Bella Dance at it, and it was rezoned from R 1 C to professional office in 2018. For context, 20 Grand is approximately 40 feet tall and is approximately 225 feet back from the front lot line, and it is a three-story building, as you can see. There are at least two instances within the neighborhood commercial office district where you have residential uses over non-residential, as you see in those two buildings. So now that we have looked at the areas being potentially zoned neighborhood commercial, review the issues to be considered. Should the permitted building height be reduced to 40 feet to match some of the other districts, such as Alexandria pipe usage? Should residential over non-residential be permitted? And if so, what should, should there be a maximum residential density? As again, we talked about previously, you can use the development standards to classify uses. For example, buildings over 10,000 square feet can be considered a conditional use and go to the Board of Adjustment. You could classify residential over non-residential as a conditional or restricted use and establish a large minimum lot area or at that point, put a maximum density on it. And then you can also include standards to mitigate height, such as if a building is over two stories, it must be 200 feet from the front lot line. These are the questions before you, similar to what we were having, discussing in Alexandria pipe. Let's start with maximum permitted height.
Can you tell me the, how many districts is this again?
How many places in town?
Yes, tell me that again.
So essentially, it is five.
Six.
Six, and what are they again?
So let's go back.
Sorry, I just want to break.
That's okay, so it's Fort Thomas Plaza.
Fort Thomas Plaza, okay. The dealership.
The dealership, yep. It is Highland Grand. And it is 600 South Fort Thomas. And it is also 2,000 Memorial Parkway, which is where the vet clinic is, and 1960 Memorial Parkway. So a total of five areas.
Do you have a map of the Highland and Grand?
I do not, but we can pull one up if we need to.
That'd be great.
Okay, all right, can you pull it up? Do you need the zoning map or the?
The proposed zoning map.
Is there a reason why all these were chosen to be a part of the same zone? I was kind of curious myself.
Yeah, so what happened is, right now, you have a situation where you have placed disparate sites in various zoning districts. So for example, these two parcels were rezoned, as was South Fort Thomas Avenue. And then you have Highland and Grand, which has a mixture of general commercial and professional office. It's just over time, you have rezoned parcels to something other than what they originally were. So in our situation, we were trying to cope with your disparate rezoning of isolated parcels in a coherent way. So that's how this happened. I don't know how all of these individual parcels, such as, you know, 600 South Fort Thomas or the two parcels of Memorial Parkway, ultimately got rezoned from residential to a non-residential district. But it has happened, and now we're trying to cope with that in a way that is respectful of the surrounding development. And we're using things like the development standards that say you have to have a minimum lot area of an acre for this or that, or two and a half acres for this or that, so that all of these disparate parcels don't end up with uses on them that are incompatible that all of these disparate parcels don't end up with uses on them that are incompatible with their surrounding areas. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
So when it comes to these districts, are these, so we, I believe we adjusted this something five years ago, where Jeff Wyler is, that's also can be nonprofit, right? So does that mean all of the other ones can have nonprofits?
So what you did at that point in time was allow churches, places of worship, in the general commercial.
And there wasn't anything to do with nonprofits in general?
Correct, and so that is being continued. Yeah, that will...
You know, all this, but one of them was, was a church, Bella Dance.
So all of that will be continued. But there are, again, there are standards in those situations.
So could you describe the difference in setbacks between the R1C that this is and the NCL?
So this is not R1C now, this is now professional office.
No, I think 1960 is R1C right now.
No, it is not. Unfortunately, both the zoning map that is on the city's website and LinkGIS has not been updated to reflect the change that happened in 2018.
Okay, so what is it then right now?
So right now, it's zoned professional office, and that happened in 2018. There are several parcels in town where the zoning map has not been updated based on the changes that were made in the last several years.
I have a question about 20 Grand there, when you go back to the old slot.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So 20 Grand is that up in the left-hand corner?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying that's 40 feet?
That is again, based on online resources.
Because that's three floors.
It is three stories.
Yeah, so I wanted everybody to see that, that's what three floors would look like at 40.
Correct. But again, let's keep in mind that this was, and I apologize if anyone in this room owns that building.
Yeah.
But this was a building that was developed probably in the early 70s, and it would be not considered Class A office space with the existing ceiling heights that are in it. So again, I apologize if I'm...
Right, so it may not be each floor would be...
But today, the first floor is typically, the floor heights are typically going to be taller, such that it would be difficult to get three stories.
But that's what 40 feet would look like.
At three stories.
Basically, almost three floors.
Correct. If you have the ceiling heights that are currently in that building.
Which people could do, possibly?
If you do not limit the stories, then yes, they could potentially do it, because there is nothing in this district that mandates floors, floor ceiling height.
So for example, like at Divac...
That's not what she said. She got down that it's undetermined, you've got 40 feet undetermined right now. You didn't say two and a half. Correct. We're there. As a ground, okay.
So again, let's, unless, if there are not any other questions, let's look at what our questions are. Do we want to reduce the height, the maximum permitted height?
So that's what I was just going to say, so...
I apologize.
So Divac, right there, 600, whatever, in South Fort Thomas, that currently could be, you can tear that building down and build a 50-foot building?
Yes, you could. Currently today, you could do that.
Compared to before, you know, we just saw, I mean, that looks like way out of place, right?
But that is what...
But you'd have to provide parking that's required for that amount of square footage.
Yes, you would have to.
That's why the small sites really aren't problems. You could never provide parking requiring for building that size.
Is there, is there, for Divac specifically, is there a zone that would make more sense than having it zoned with the rest of...
So we certainly could retain your existing professional office district if that is something you would like to do, but we would have to dramatically change it, because as was just pointed out, you could put a 50-foot building there today. But we were again, trying to come up with a way to mitigate some of these interesting rezonings that have happened in the past, without creating a large number of districts.
Yeah, it just, I understand the point, it's like trying to, trying to stream on everything, but if we try to match that, those properties up, Divac, and say where the dealership is, if you do that, you're going to restrict what the dealership can do, and maybe over...
Actually not. Actually not. So for example, for the dealership, you have to have a minimum lot area, it's a conditional use, and it has to be a minimum lot area of two and a half acres. So again, you would never be able to do that at South Fort Thomas. And then for other uses that are, that would not be appropriate, we are saying things such as, may not be located on a corner that has a right-of-way that is owned and maintained by the city of Fort Thomas, which means it can only, you know, we're severely limiting what can happen at Divac. So we have used the conditional use and the restricted use standards to limit what can happen at, at Divac.
What could happen at Divac?
Basically, professional office.
What about residential?
Not currently now, and not under the code. As it's currently drafted, yes, residential over non-residential could happen at Divac.
What about residential, R1 residential?
No.
I think we need to chop off Jeff Wyler and talk about the rest of it, because they sit in different areas. Jeff Wyler is the one.
But what about the Divac site are you concerned? Could I, give it a different name?
I think in general, though, that...
But I think all this, everything would stay the same. I mean, if it's just, if it's the name change, okay, because that adds another, another zone, which is what we try to limit when you're redoing this whole thing. What specifically that's allowed there that you're not happy with? Because I think that's what, that's what I'm talking about.
What's the difference between the zone that Jeff Wyler's in now and the one across the street where the liquor barn is?
So the liquor barn today is general commercial and Jeff Wyler and Fort Thomas Plaza's general commercial today.
So the liquor barn is the same as this as well, too, then?
No, because the liquor barn is on the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district.
Okay, so why don't, why don't, what's the difference we're making of the mixed-use because, why?
Because the Alexandria mixed-use district is particular to Alexandria Pike. So let's, let's don't forget that right today, that professional office district is used disparately throughout town. It's used at 600 South Fort Thomas, it's used at those two sites on Memorial Parkway, it's used at 20 North Grand. So the fact that you're, so it's not unusual for a zoning district to be applied in varying environments. You're doing it now, and so what we're proposing is not dramatically different from that, other than the standpoint that we are dramatically limiting what can go at the top of Divac based on restricted and conditional use standards.
I would rather limit some of those other uses. It's the same zone because of the restrictions and because of the, basically the lots. You can't do, you can only do so many things.
Correct.
And none of them consists of a 50-foot building.
Correct. Well, correct, maybe I think we want to talk about heights, but...
So you want me to do 40 foot, let it come through?
You could potentially do 40 feet, but as Jerry said, is that the side at South Fort, like 600 South, South Fort Thomas Avenue, is a half an acre.
Right.
So if you start putting on an enormous number of square footage there, whether it's office or retail, you're going to have to park it, and that's going to be hard to do on half an acre.
And that was what my point was.
I'm sorry.
Even if you sit there and say all of them have to be 40 foot, you couldn't really put a 40-foot there at Divac, because there wouldn't be enough parking.
Correct, I mean theoretically, correct. Unless you put a garage underneath it. But that side, unlike others, it'd be difficult to do underground parking because it's a level site.
Where that is in town, and I keep going back to, I apologize if I make it difficult, but where that is in town, it doesn't really make sense for anything else to be there besides, size-wise, besides what's there now. Unless, and the fact that it's...
So call it a day.
So I, and I don't want to, I don't think we need to add more zones, but if we can figure out a way to where, I mean, we might have to for just that one, because the other ones, I can see where we could put the restrictions on and make off on under there, but that, I'm just driving past there and throw my head.
Again, what is, what can go there that shouldn't go there? Because we're going to need to talk about that to create this new zone.
What they're saying is...
I just don't think there's anything that could go there that you'd be concerned.
Right, because of the other things in that thing, parking issues. The other aspects, they know, because they do thought of that, that nobody can build another building there because there's not enough parking, so you don't have to worry about.
Why not just change it? Why not change it?
It already has, that's the thing. Currents in it already have limitations.
Correct.
And you can't, you can't put two parcels together, because that's the only parcel. So it's not like you can buy a house next to it, they're the residential, that's the only parcel. So if you do want to rename it, we can call it Divac Zone, but the question is, what needs to go there? Because what's already limited, I don't see any other options.
Is this also at the corner, you said of Highland and Grand, too, as well? Those side highlighted? General commercial is the same zone.
So here's the issue first. I would have happy to retain your existing professional office district and use it on that side. However, it has been zoned non-residential for a number of years, and we can't simply rezone it to R1C without putting the city in legal jeopardy.
Yeah, not, not, not just flip it over to R1C, but option in the future. If somebody, but I don't know, I mean, people have money that they can do whatever they want to do, but I don't see financially how it would work out if you bought that, tore it down and put one house. Financially, probably doesn't work, because people spend their money on other things, too, so, right? They might, they might want to do that.
So we could...
I don't want to limit that, because somebody wants to...
Somebody can always come in and ask for his other changes, to change it to residential if they want.
Or we can create, you know, a professional office district and allow single-family detached dwelling. So let's just, let's back up for a step. Do we want to create a specific zoning district that is only applying at 600 South Fort Thomas? No.
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 Doesn't be evident. There's some very interesting pieces of property in town with different variables that they go on, so it's tough.
I'm going to be single with all the other...
Then why not just limit it currently? But I don't get it, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Do you want to answer that, why not limit it currently?
Well, to limit it currently in the way that you're saying, the only way to do that is to leave a place with modifications, your existing professional office district. Because again, your existing professional office district allows residential over non-residential, allows a fitted building, allows all of these disparate uses that people are concerned about in that location. So, but we can create a professional office district that can be used there, as well as the two parcels on Memorial Parkway, that strictly defines uses that would go there, if that's what you prefer me to do.
I think that's, I think that's the answer.
I'm hearing from the planning commission that you aren't comfortable with that, but...
I don't need for, because you've got a couple of all that.
No.
And it's simple to keep, you know, the number of zones we have now.
You think one person changes it? Eight, nine, 10, 15 zones.
The only significant thing you could create, because you're pretty controlled already the way it is, the only significant change, you could add that residential's permitted, and they were there for a change.
That's correct. We could add that as a permitted use.
That's true. It is not residential as residential over business, but residential as a house.
I think single-family detached dwelling would be a permitted use by law.
If we could do that, because I, my brain is suspended trying to figure out, and just try to figure it out.
Allow you to have residential, but we won't let you have residential over office. We don't want, we don't want additional residents. I mean, it's, how do you, how do you adjust that?
Well, single-family, single-family home versus a condo unit.
Yeah.
It's still the same number of people, it's only...
Single-family versus a condo.
It's a fine town.
Well, you could, investor could buy the building, tear it down, split the lots into three or four.
I like the idea of a separate zone, though, for him, because I just don't think any of them are the same, especially the Jeff Wyler, which seems odd that that is...
Changing from where these are, what zone they're in right now, to the neighborhood commercial, does it affect the current building setbacks at all?
No, they can stay as it exists forever.
But if they were to burn down, they can go back as they are now?
If it is a non-conforming structure, and they make an application to rebuild within six months of an event that they did not cause, a fire, a tornado, or whatever else, that they can build back, it's non-conforming. The key is, they can't have caused it, and it has to have to make an application within six months. So we're adding and passing it. I'm hearing that you would like to retain your existing professional office district for at least 600 South Fort Thomas, as well as potentially the two parcels on Memorial Parkway, and allow single-family detached as a permitted use of this side, and you prefer that we don't. Do we kick this down the can, or do we, how do we move forward on this particular issue?
We decide, right? I think that's, the answer is the people who give the final vote, in my opinion. You know, if you pick it down, I think it's a great suggestion. I don't think any of them are the same, and I like that. And I think, why don't you propose something like that, bring it to the next meeting, and if something changes, and someone can change their mind, be my guest.
I don't, I mean, it's a good conversation, I just want to ask a question, because you said none of them are the same, and I agree with you, but that doesn't mean that we need to create a separate zone for each specific one, because they're not the same.
How many, how many new zones have we created this time? Would not have created one new zone to three parcels, how many new zones and subzones have we created this time?
I mean, I don't...
That's my whole, exactly.
But we have gotten rid of, you have today, you have four non-residential districts. You have general commercial, professional office, highway commercial, and light industrial.
And many of the subzones were about making non-conforming conform.
They were, and it's other situations, you know, we are attempting, especially in the downtown area and Midway, to recognize some of the existing situations that are a part of it. So for example, there are homes that are, you know, in those two districts, so therefore, we are trying to make them conform, and so therefore, we create the Sub-Zone District Four. So in terms of the non-residential, we have taken, they're outside of downtown and Midway, we have taken four districts and created two. So if we create a new district, we go from four to three.
Okay. So we, we're actually still losing one, so we're actually sticking, it's actually better. I think that's the, I think that seems to be the consensus, as far as I'm concerned. At least we can look at it and do it, and maybe if it doesn't work, and make, maybe otherwise.
So we have three of those areas in one zone, and then 20 Grand and Fort Thomas Plaza on the other?
So what I heard is that for Memorial Parkway, which are those two parcels, and 600 South Fort Thomas would be some newly drafted professional office district, and then Highland and Grand and Fort Thomas Plaza would continue to be neighborhood commercial office.
Wouldn't they all approve it?
It will, it'll be, oh, yes, the professional office district, if we create a new one that is similar to your current one, would then be an office district, yes.
Would it approve?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so like if, if the vet, if they decided that they didn't want to have office space, and want to create some kind of retail or commercial business in that corner lot, would they give it to them?
Well, we can add that to the zone.
Add to a professional office.
Well, then we're creating a zone, so we can add whatever we want to.
That's not a professional office zone.
I'm just saying, just make a zone, that works.
I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding about the way you have proposed, because I think the way you proposed it actually solves all the problems that you're concerned about, and allows everything you just asked about. Because of the other restrictions in the zone, on the size of the lot, on parking, on all those other restrictions, it essentially covers that goal without restricting commercial or retail, or if they want to do something else. So it seems to me like you had a good solution to pull these things together, why not leave it at that?
Yeah, the only thing I'm hearing that's different is that in order to put our residence there, they'll have to do a zone change, which is what they've got right now. So I...
So I guess my question is, do you guys feel like there's enough safeguards to leave it the way they proposed?
Wait, wait, wait.
Like, we're just, right, there's enough? I think that I'm understanding. There's enough in there where that guy, everything else, you feel like there's enough safeguards and there would not be those, you know, or something.
I would say there are enough safeguards, but what you are actually doing, in truth, is you are signaling that this is a distinct district that is appropriate only in these three locations for only these three uses. There are enough safeguards in the neighborhood commercial office district to preclude all the things that are frightening you, but by the very fact that it's called neighborhood commercial office and has a list of uses in it, that is causing people to concern. So this is more about perception in reality.
Right, and I think that perception would be to change it. We have restrictions in place already, why not just change it so that there's no perception there, but they just can't?
Well, they just brought up the reasons why not, because that's going to restrict them to only office, not, not commercial, not retail, whereas the existing thing that they have recommended that covers all the concerns about something else being there. So it doesn't make sense to make it its own.
Why not just create a zone that creates all that?
Why?
Well, that's essentially what we tried to do.
Yeah.
If we have a sub-zone to it, I'm just, I'm getting worried through here, because I can't, I can't get over that the zone is the same.
We just let her create this new zone, and you'll see that, they'll be about the same. But if that's what you guys want to do, then we'll just do that. Because that's all it is, is we just want a name change, and it'll be probably the same stuff. So if that's, that's what's necessary.
I don't think, I think it's more of a, put more restrictions...
Yeah, I agree.
On the bit, like, those, those.
They're already there.
They're already, I have a list right now. Right, so we'll just, we'll just do that, we'll move forward. I'll send out something.
But it's the same, if those restrictions are there, so those restrict, same restrictions the only Jeff Wyler lot?
No, they, they are, but Jeff Wyler lot is large enough to be able to do more. Since the lot's multi-acre, you can do more there. This is only half acre, it can't get any larger, that's why it's restricted, you can't do drive-throughs, things like that.
Then we will create the district and, and we can bring that back. All right, which brings us back to, essentially, so let's, let's think about this again really quickly. So, this one, the neighborhood commercial office district now will only apply at Fort Thomas Plaza and Highland and Grand. All right, so our questions to consider, do we want to change the maximum permitted height?
What is it now, 50?
Uh, it's 50 basically because that's what your current ordinance says.
40 by 7?
40. Raise it down to 40, okay. All right. Okay. Do we want to allow?
Airborne, I'm sorry.
Do we want to allow residential uses over non-residential, keeping in mind that your current professional office district has allowed that for a number of years? And you have some existing ones that exist, at Highland and Grand, you have residential over non-residential.
No.
So, do we want to allow residential over non-residential?
No.
And so, the general commercial allowed residential over non-residential in 2019, but as Kevin pointed out, when that was considered at the time, it was pointed out that there were existing situations in the general commercial district where that was already happening.
That was too intense.
So, like, what I think about is, is, it's not necessarily like the Padreino or the building across the street that has a couple apartments in it. I think about if you take the, the whole area that will be rezoned neighborhood commercial, that would include the three-story example, I guess 40 grand, urban back and that little apartment complex, that lot would be roughly 900 feet by 360 feet. So, then you could, you could, since the setback is on the street, and when I up to the R1 district, you're 25 feet, so you could essentially have a building that was about 300,000 square feet right there.
So, again, you've got to park it.
But you could do parking underneath.
You could do parking underneath.
So, it'd be a...
If you combined all of those parcels, yes, without an enormous amount of residential density in that area.
That's, and that gets back to, I haven't heard anybody...
Oh, commercial, yes. So, so what we could do, there's a couple of options. We can say if it exists today, it's restricted use, if it exists today, if it weren't its phases, it continues to be permitted. So, that would essentially allow those people who are currently there to have a legitimate use. That's one option. The other option is to say, make it a restricted use and say either a maximum residential density or say, you know, if it's more than X amount of square feet, it has to go in front as a conditional use, so it has to go in front of board adjustment. There are many different ways to skin this cat if you want to allow it as a small scale. So, you could, you could also say that, you could say it's permitted provided it's no more than X number of square feet, or X number of units, those kinds of things. So, those are the options if you would like to do that. Because you are correct, if you combined all those parcels, you could get a large amount of residential density in that area.
No.
What do you guys think about that?
No.
I mean, back to my point before, you've been allowed to do a lot of this already for the past 25 years, it's not happened. The chances of it happening in the future, I mean, the biggest, the biggest potential development that we heard in the corner of Highland was that UDF wanted urban back. And we obviously didn't really necessarily want a UDF, but some people did. But, you know, I, I know that there's this concern about somebody coming in to build a massive development, but like I said, if the market's there, the market would be there. It has never been there, so...
The market kind of determines that and it hasn't happened, so, you know, it seems unlikely, but we're, we would allow for it by not making changes and that's, I think that's what we're here for is.
The same now.
City wants to allow it, so I don't know how we change it, but I would be in favor of putting restrictions on it so that we can't do what... I would agree.
No density.
Now, you can do that, but again, as I would say, you have at least two instances where they exist and you want to make them non-conforming uses, which means that they, if something did happen to them, they could not build back. So, at the very least, I'm going...
And I'm sorry, that's where he's on the show.
Uh, yes, I mean, it's an issue, definitely. So, if you're...
If you're like grandfather, then...
Well, the grandfather, but for example, if it burns down to more than 60% of the replacement value, they can't build it back, which becomes a problem for them in getting insurance and various other things, and financing and all of it. So, you know, if you just want to say if it exists today, it can continue to exist, so it's a restricted use, then that legitimizes where it currently exists and nothing else can happen. All right, so we've discovered that. So, we're 40 feet, are we residential over non-residential that exists today?
Yeah.
So, can we do something about that, that they, now, explain to me, I just want to make sure that, is there any way like Padreinos, if it burns down, they have two residential above it, can we put something in there where they can build it back even if they don't need those?
That's what we're going to do, we're going to make it a restricted use and say if it exists, let's just give it a...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, so many things went on, reading this, reading this, trying to look at that, just make...
Well, here's an incredible number of uses. Yeah, so that's what we'll do. Anything else on the neighborhood commercial office district? So, to summarize, we're creating a new district and we're limiting the height and we're limiting residential to where it exists today. Anything else?
One question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I, based on the tone and, and discussing this, I would say, do you intend really to say like Padreinos, for instance, if there's two residential units above Padreinos, if they wanted to redo it and say at a 40-foot height and they had all this, well, I have, you know, I have my first floor as commercial and now my next two floors, space-wise, you know, for residential. Are you restricting it to the number of units currently or are you...
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
I didn't hear that part of it. Okay, thank you.
That's what I heard, did I misunderstand?
Well, it's more than, sorry, I guess I clarified, so it would have to be just two because we won't allow multiple.
So, what we would have to say is, the number of dwelling units that exist on the day the ordinance is passed can remain. That way, for example, they couldn't take the two units that are there and create three out of them, that kind of thing.
But do you expand, you were getting back to a two-family discussion before.
So, that's actually a valid question. As, as I heard, you could not expand the footprint. Would you like for them to be able to expand the footprint? So, for example, if it's a two-bedroom unit today with one bath and they wanted to make it a three-bedroom with two baths, do you want to allow that to happen?
If you're trying to, if you're trying to limit density though, by increasing the number of bedrooms or whatever else, you're increasing density, that seems to go against what you're saying, so, I'm just, just asking about that, not in...
But we're talking, we're talking just neighborhood commercial, right? So, it's a small, very small number of...
I understand that.
No, I'm just clarifying, that's, that's what it is, right?
Well, that's if a family grows, it's not like you're going to get somebody from Cincinnati with their, their job, right? We shouldn't do that, but... That's a good point then.
It doesn't seem like that amount, I mean, we could certainly find a number on what the potential impact that increase of density would be on adding a third bedroom to every two-family unit. I can't imagine it would be similar to building a 300,000 square foot building though. You know, you're, you're only talking, in this case, in this spot, you're talking about, what, 40 units?
Yeah, improving the value of the units that are there. Yeah, okay.
Padreino building specifically, if the language that you put in there, if something were to happen or if they were to add on to it, did they add a second story, one is one unit's moment, because if we limit it to three stories and 40 feet?
So, we actually didn't talk about the number of stories, we just said 40 feet. So, for example, your, your example, we don't limit the number of stories and they wanted to, they have two units up there now, and let's say they wanted to add another story so that they have a, a two-story dwelling unit. So, it's still two stories, there's still two units, but they're now two-story units, right? If we allow them to have an addition, that addition could go up or it could go back as long as it meets the 40 feet.
Yeah, that's, that's the question, so that's permitted.
I'm asking you that question, I mean, do you have any concerns about where the addition goes?
Well, the only place it could go would probably be on the front.
And there's not, they would have to actually go up or to the front, I mean, there's not a whole lot, that's a tiny little lot where Padreinos is.
Yeah, and the new, the setback on the front is zero, correct? So, they'd have to be on the front.
So, in the neighborhood commercial district, there is no minimum setback?
Right.
Yeah. So, they could go on if they wanted to. Or they could go up.
The question is, can they just expand here? That's my, was my question.
And again, and I think what I heard is yes, unless I'm... There are two that I'm aware of, that doesn't mean that there aren't others out there. And because we didn't talk about the number of stories that they would have commercial office district, do we again, want to talk about that or what? Okay, let's move on.
So, right now, there's no restriction on the story?
Correct. Correct. I am at, it's at your discretion, it can just be Alexander McShus or it can also, in terms of the number of stories, be neighborhood commercial. Now that we're only talking about those two areas, neighborhood commercial office.
Oh, we can't hear, we can't hear you add.
I'm sorry, she asked if we agreed with the 5%, I said we didn't, we agreed with that, but not the stories.
Okay.
So, we never actually got to a definition of how many stories we would like. So, I didn't know if we wanted to readdress this again here, if we're trying to play with the community, if the same kind of high restrictions and stories or not. I just wanted to clarify that and just we haven't gotten to it, so, I'm sorry, I feel about that.
So, in the next round, I'm going to leave it as an open issue.
So, in the, so in the newly created PO, PO district now, are we still doing the 40 feet with those sort of restrictions in there as well?
That's my understanding.
I think we can come back to that, so we'll, we'll have some very big, deep conversation. Are we going to leave it at three?
All right, so we're going to move on to the central business district. For the ease of discussion, I had split the discussion into two and in terms of we're dealing with town center at one point and then midway later. We're going to start with town center. So, for the first two issues that we're going to consider, we're really talking about the acceptable amount of density and intensity at height in the town center and supporting subzoning districts. In terms of the maximum permitted height, we're going to be discussing, limiting the number of stories, we'll be discussing the maximum building width in the town center core, expanding the town center core to include more of the parcel behind West Banquo, and then whether or not to permit bed and breakfast establishments in supporting subzoning district. So, I'm going to do a very quick photo tour of the town center just to remind everyone. So, we'll start with the west side of the street, the photos are not to scale, some of them are my photos and some of them are screenshots, so please forgive bad photography. As I understand it, Highland and North Avenue, North Fort Thomas Avenue really is the historic center of downtown. On this side of the street, we have traditional main street buildings that are two stories and at the sidewalk. Across Highland, we come to One Highland, both traditional buildings and One Highland have no setback from the sidewalk except for the outdoor dining, which helps to mark the corner. Building placement on these lots changes as we progress toward the former bank, which is now Green Line, which is next to One Highland and moved toward the Sonic Lodge. As we head toward Forest Avenue, there are six structures that were originally built as single-family homes and now, until you get to Fifth Third Bank. And now, some of them are businesses, some of them are residential, and some of them are business on the first floor and residential above. A lot of homes interrupted by Fifth Third Bank, which has a generous front setback, basically due to the front yard parking. And then the dwelling use for businesses persons progresses after Fifth Third Bank to get to Forest. When we move to the east side of North Fort Thomas Avenue, the CBD starts at Montville, which is where the post office is. After the post office, you have two banks, both of which they have drive-throughs. With the Village Players building, the front setback moves forward back to the sidewalk and is more reflective of a traditional downtown. Where Highland Avenue intersects with North Fort Thomas, you have what is called a terminated vista, which we've talked about a few times, which happens when you have a street dead into a parcel, in this case, it's Highland dead into the bank. As we move northward from the Village Players, we encounter more older traditional main street buildings, which include Yale Theatre, and all of these buildings are at the sidewalk forming a street wall. The street wall continues with the building formerly housing Fort Thomas Drugs and School Building. Unfortunately, active engagement between the pedestrian on the sidewalk and the buildings basically stopped at the school building, basically because of the windows in the school building. And then you have another dead spot as you transition to the bank and the parking lot. Down Miller Avenue is the strip commercial center that sits back from the street with a parking lot. As you cross Lonely, the storefronts continue to be right at the front sidewalk, but please notice on the top photo, that at some point in time in the past, those were single-family homes that someone added a storefront to. And then downtown ends with a city building. Like the Alexander Pyt McShus district, we use subzoning districts to differentiate the areas in town center, and again, we did this in order to be more sensitive to the areas in downtown that are different in terms of use and setbacks. In the case of town center, there are, as I said, there's basically differentiation in terms of use and development standards, and there are three subzoning districts, the core, the supporting, and the residential. The pink is the town center core, the light orange is the supporting district, and the dusty blue is the residential subzoning district for all the homes on Miller, Lonely, and Audubon Place. You will notice that there's a red line for that portion of town center where you must have required occupied space, and you will see that there is an asterisk, Highland dead ends into, with Fort Thomas, excuse me, South Fort Thomas, and that again marks the terminated vista. And then finally, you will see the brown hash marks, and those hash marks show the limits of the central business district, historic overlay district. So, the first consideration is the maximum permitted building height, including limiting the number of stories in the core and supporting subzoning districts. So, currently in the core, the maximum height is 40 feet, and in the supporting, it is 35 feet, and that's all discussed back in June of 2023. We have had community members say that they have concerns about the number of stories that can potentially be built in 40 feet in particular, and so, and they have requested that it be moved into two stories. Other community members have said to how stories might be permitted. Other community members have said things like, well, if you're going to limit the number of stories that has the maximum height be 40 feet in both subzoning districts. So, the question becomes, you know, what is the actual appropriate height and should stories be regulated? So, as this graphic shows, you will see how height is measured from gray to the highest point of the roof, and it illustrates a half-story. This is the Kaufman Woodsy Building, which is two and a half stories, and it's approximately 36 feet height, again, based on online sources. As the council retreat, we discussed the height of the existing residential structures in supporting subzoning district. There are several, seven structures, including Schoen and Pendry, that were originally built as single-family detached dwellings, all of them were two and a half stories. According to online sources, the Pendry building is approximately 44 feet tall and the Schoen building is approximately 37 feet tall. And then West Banquo is approximately 37 feet tall. So, to bring us back to the question at hand, what should the maximum permitted height be within these two subzoning districts? And should the number of stories be prescribed to two or two and a half? It does, it does. If you, and I, as I've done in some of the other ones, I'll give you some options to consider. You could impose a number, a limit on the number of dwelling units in a half-story, if that's worrying you, you can limit it to a limited number like two, or you could say it can only be 50% of the half-story. You could explicitly say if the habitable portion of the half-story has a gross floor area greater than 60% of the floor directly beneath it, then it's, it can't be, it will be considered a story and therefore prohibited. Again, that's just a restatement of the definition, it would be helpful to have that in the text in the district so that people understand it. You can restrict the building depth to 125 feet, and to give you some context for that, the West Banquo building is approximately 110 feet deep, and then the 18 North building is approximately 144 feet deep, and the Fifth Third building is 100 feet deep, including the area covering the drive-through lanes. And the Fifth Third Building is 100 feet deep, including the area covering the drive-through lanes. You can classify buildings, I'm sorry? Including the tractor lights, yeah. You can classify buildings over 5,500 square feet as a conditional use. And to give you some context, the first and second floors of the Fort Thomas Independent School Building are about 5,200 square feet. There's additional square footage in that building in the lower level. And then if you want to restrict the number of stories based on the type of roof, it's an option as well. If it's a flat roof, it's two stories. If it's a, you know, a sloped roof, meaning having a pitch more than, that's 612 or more, then it's two and a half. And this regulation also has the benefit of indicating that you have a preference for sloped roofs. So do any of these options work for regulating density and intensity in the core and supporting subzoning districts? So let's start with height.
When we start with height, just to be clear, are we, are we drawing the reducing the 10% variance possibility down to five like we did?
Yes, we have already, that will be universal throughout. So the administrative variance would be that 5%. So the first thing we want to consider is...
That's what I thought, 40 feet to an extra. Let's talk about.
It's a no-brainer.
I said one of the roofs, like you can make it where it's on the spot, it's two. Because I think like the Pendry building, it has a lot of characteristics. I don't want to lose that charm that they can work with.
And is your building bigger than 5,500 feet?
Well, it's not my building, but I couldn't tell.
So is the 5,500 square feet, existing buildings?
So for, yeah, so if it's over, if you want to use that as a way to give more review, because again, if you make it a conditional use, then it has to go to the board of adjustment, and it becomes a discretionary approval.
So is that per floor or is that total?
That'd be total.
Okay, so for example, Pendry's building, if it's one of 5,500 square feet, they're going to have to come to board adjustment to do it?
Correct. So, but, yeah, these are just options out there as a way to control density and intensity. You don't have to do that. We can simply say 40 feet, two and a half stories, in which case, you may not want to do that.
Okay.
Or you may. I'm throwing options out there to give you a way to regulate that gives you more comfort than what you currently have.
So different from the Alexandria Pike area, where you have to come up on the street, right here, in the, in the core area. I would like to see it 35 foot.
So I think we're going to be making, we're going to be making a lot of buildings non-conforming. And do you really want to do that?
Yeah.
Your, your all opinion on, if it is 35 feet, I'm thinking looks-wise, because like, some of these buildings are already at 40 feet. I don't think they look out of place, because we have the setbacks in place for that, correct?
So it depends on where you are. So in the core, they're more than likely going to be closer to the street. And the core is just that area, basically around Highland and South Fort Thomas. The supporting is the area from Shone all the way to Forest Avenue and from the women, excuse me, the Village Players to, on the other, on the north side, south side of Village Players, all the way to the post office. And the minimum front setback is 35 feet. So yes, you do have a bigger setback there.
Okay. I think when we had talked originally, and that's kind of what I wanted your all's opinion on, is there a way to kind of stagger that out? So the further you go out, you know, is there something that, I don't want to look squatty. Okay. I just didn't want, like, if you go 35 feet, in your opinion, could that start to look kind of, I think we threw that word out there, so it kind of, could it start to look like squatty or anything? Where it's too short and things don't look proportionate? I just want your opinion on that.
What's the movie theater height? The old movie theater, I'm so sorry. Can't remember what it's saying.
Yeah, so the front of the building, I looked at this. The front of the building is roughly 38 feet, but the fly tower is at 50 feet. Yeah.
Are you referring to the further you go away from the seat, well, out of core, with the setback being 35 feet?
I think we reversed it, though, because this is what we had.
Yeah, if you move, was setback 25 feet or more, I'm okay going up higher. Like Pendry building, right? It's 44 feet, but it's setback, so you don't get hotter buildings closer together and create corridor effect.
So I would point out to you that because of the width of your right-of-way, you're never going to get that corridor effect at 40 feet. Because in most places in downtown, your right-of-way, at some points, is 86 feet wide. And in order to get a corridor effect, you'd have to do more than a one-to-one. And you're never going to do that with a 40-foot building.
Well, you have a 50-foot going on the other side.
You still want, you still want, because it's a one-to-one ratio. But, so I don't think we need to worry about the corridor effect. It just can't happen, given the width of your right-of-way. Yes, it can, it's 86 feet. Because you've got two ways of traffic, and you've got parking, and you've got sidewalk. But again, but we're not doing 35 feet, we're considering 40 feet. But the question becomes, should that 40 feet be both in the core and supporting? And is it appropriate in the supporting because it does have a setback? I think it's what Lauren is asking.
Yes, to make it 35 feet does make sense if Pendry's building is already 44 feet.
I think one of the things we had mentioned is, in the core, okay, make it 35 feet, and as you go further away, then you can increase the height. So it does look...
Well, that leaves a war on conforming today.
Well, because, but they need to set back.
No, the height, like the Highland building, you can make it 35, but you need to do more.
I think we got to be careful, too. I know you like, I love how looks, well, all the way to the houses and the frame. People are trying to maximize, but they're going to create a lot of roofs there, too.
But again, you can also regulate height by the type of roof. You could say, you could say two stories if it's a flat roof, and two and a half if it has at least a 612 pitch.
Are you talking about stories or are you talking about height?
I'm talking about stories in that way. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you.
I don't mind that as much, you know what I mean?
I just don't want to lose that character either.
Yeah, I think that's what everybody's concerned with, you know what I mean? It's not density and intensity, it's also character. That's why a lot of people move here, they like to walk through town, see what they have.
Or somebody can tear down a pitch for a house and build a flat roof building. You're not restricting.
Well, you are restricting the stories that you can put back.
Well, yeah, you could, but I mean, in terms of the shape of the roof, they can do whatever they want. Like, it's still make a two, if they have two and a half square pitch, and they want to make it a two-story flat, they can still do that.
But you make a two-story flat, but two and a half story would make it pitched, which would actually help with the symmetry, I think.
All right, so let's take a step back here.
What do you guys think of that? Anybody else, Andy?
So let's take a step back. Are we okay in both the core and the supporting, having a maximum height of 40 feet?
No.
I like 35.
35 creates, again, a lot of non-conforming structures that we don't know.
Non-conforming structures.
The whole non-conforming, I get that. But we're not really talking, I mean, this isn't about the buildings that are sitting there. They can be rebuilt. This is about a new building, is what we're really talking about here. Right?
But do you really want, do you really want to? We keep talking about valuing your existing character. And both Shone and Pendry Building are over 35 feet. That, we have already established, and most of those two and a half story buildings out there are over 35 feet. That is your established character.
That's the character that it is now with the outlining buildings not being as tall. If you had buildings of the same height and you changed the effect of what people are looking for.
But in a supporting subzoning district, you are requiring a front setback, you are requiring the distance between buildings. I mean, you certainly can do what you choose to do, but what I'm telling you is, your character has already been established with those in the supporting area, with buildings that are two and a half stories and over 35 feet.
So my focus on this is that the character, as you say, is these buildings. But if you were to buy three of these loaded with character buildings and tore them down, you could then build the 75-foot wide by, you know, however many feet deep. You could, that's what I'm, not what's there.
Right, but, but again, you still have the other layer of review, which is the design review board. And I, and I understand there are concerns about how that has been happening in the past, but I think the process has been improved.
How does this affect, because this is a national overlay, there is some kind of a historic overlay there, isn't it?
So we are proposing, so today, there is a historic, historic district that was established in your zoning code, I mean, excuse me, in your code of ordinances. In this zoning code update, we are proposing an overlay district that just simply takes your existing language from your city code and places it in the zoning ordinance.
So you're going to get rid of that historic overlay?
No, you do not have an overlay today.
We have a national historic overlay, we thought we had one.
No, you don't.
Midway District, we do?
The Midway has, is a national registered district, which has no restrictions in and of itself, other than it simply can be delisted. But downtown is not in a, a national registered district at all. All it has is the, the overlay, the district that was created in your general code of ordinances. But as Matt just pulled up, you do have one building that's on the national register, which is the Village Players Building. But other than that, but again, the national register has no restrictions other than potentially being delisted. But yes, we are creating, as a part of this update, the central business district historic overlay district, which simply takes your existing language and memorializes it on your zoning map.
So that at any point, to avoid three parcels turning into one, can you build language into that for either lot size, building size, not just height, with the size of the 125 feet?
So we have already done that. So the maximum building width in the supporting subzoning district is 75 feet. So we have already done that. And we are requiring the distance between the buildings, which you do not currently have in your ordinance. Right now, you can build all the buildings cheap by jowl. But under this situation, the maximum building width is 75 feet, and there has to be at least 15 feet between them. And in the core, the maximum building width is 150 feet. Correct. In the core, it's 150 feet currently as it's drafted.
Hey, I was wondering, we didn't really talk about lift this whole time, we've been talking about height in all these areas.
So we are, we are, we will be dealing with the width in the core in future slides.
Okay, Andy, I was thinking, you know, something like that, did you talk about lift in there?
We talked about it in the context of if you were going to allow residential over non-residential, then perhaps you would need a maximum building width. But since you chose not to do that, then it was, we did not, there seems not to be an appetite to limit the maximum building width since you have been therefore controlling density by not allowing it.
I do like your suggestion of, in these houses across the street that are two and a half stories, of limiting the number of units to just the number two, and not talking about a percentage. Because that limits a ginormous building, they wouldn't do it to you.
And we certainly could do that. I don't, and I know that there are properties who currently have residential units in those buildings. I don't know the number that they have. I think we want to sort of find that out. And I don't think there's more than three in any of them. But let's find out. And if it's three units, then we would say three. You got that kind of thing to be permitted. But again, and I don't need to be overly pedantic, but I'm trying to place the, keep our conversation narrow on, on topic, so that we can move forward.
In our discussion, one of the primary concerns really is the Fifth Third parcel. Because we, none of us envision that that they're being there for the long term. And it's a fairly large parcel with pretty deep, you know, deep lot. So the question is, what does the city desire to allow out? You know, and if a developer is going to purchase a property for residential, for some type of condition, residential, it's likely they're going to want a point for you to say. But what do you want to allow out?
Well, the problem for me, if you were just looking at that one piece of property, this new zone doesn't go all the way back, correct?
Correct. The, we, there is a kind of a line on your current zoning map that slips the parcel roughly in thirds. So two-thirds of it are zone residential, and a third of it is zone central business district. And we have kept that.
So with that in mind, doing something where the, you know, Fifth Third is, I don't think that's a bad thing. What I worry about is somebody collecting the whole street, and then there's a ginormous building. You know, a developer, the price of, the percentage of the ground cost in a development is what, 10, 15%? You guys might have a better view. So they can always take these people and build it, which would be very attractive, and have a enormous building there. So to control that, but also maybe allow something active, or what can we do with that? Because you're, we're talking about a lot of, and Mike, I know it's right here, but there's a lot of different character that we're putting in the same zone, and what prevents it all being torn down? Then there's no character.
Yeah, that's right.
Can't flip the building. So that still allows for some residential. But then it's like, how it was, the draft, or it was originally written as there was no doubt. So I do like how you said it 125 feet. So you can't build it. But it's still, you could, you could have three parcels, you could have three parcels that were 75-foot long, three parcels 75, correct? You could do that.
So yes, as it's currently drafted, if the design review board permitted those homes to be destroyed, potentially you could combine the parcels and create a larger building. More than likely, it's going to be the Fifth Third Building that is going to come down. That lot, Frank just looked for me, is 150 feet wide, 150 feet wide. So you, at that point, actually, we need to be able to get two buildings off, right? If it's 75 plus 75 plus 15, it's more than 100 feet. So you'd get one building on that side. So the only way they could expand would be back.
Or buy them in the house.
Or buy them house in short. But again, it would have to go in front of the designer review board.
Anyway, that's my feeling about this. So how do you, how do you devote? How do you allow something, like, you know, if Fifth Third isn't there anymore, and you are going to have a small building, how do you prevent it from being a huge building?
Can you put a restriction on square footage?
So again, we can, all, all the things listed, they're there. We can restrict building depth to 125 feet, for example. So again, that's one to restrict how big the building can be. We can say if it's over X amount of square feet, it becomes a conditional use, and then it goes in front of the board of adjustment, and then it becomes a discretionary review. So let's take a second and understand what that means. It is, it meets all of the standards, and it is a, it's permitted by right. It comes in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission has to, let's say that again, has to approve it. They have no choice. If you say it's a conditional use, such as classifying buildings over a certain square footage as a conditional use, it goes in front of the board of adjustment, it becomes a discretionary review. And that gives them the, they can't turn it down necessarily. That gives them the opportunity to put site-specific conditions on it. So for example, let's use planning. Someone buys the Fifth Third Building, and they buy the two-story house, two and a half story house next door. And they want to tear it down and combine the parcels. And the D R B approves that. They could say, the B O A could say, in this situation, because of the proximity of the homes on Woodlands, the depth of your building can only be X amount of square, X amount of feet. And that would be a reasonable condition that they could place on that development based on its particular site. So that is the benefit of having it be a conditional use and go to the board of adjustment, as opposed to it being a use that meets all the development standards and goes to the planning commission and has to be approved. So when I, when I say things like, make it a conditional use, you are adding an additional level of review and more discretion to the board than is reviewing it.
I feel comfortable with that. I mean, I feel like then you've got extra layers of protection. I mean, is there anything beyond that, that, like you said, that you get both? Is there something beyond that that we can also look into? Or do you feel like that's a pretty good condition?
What is that threshold for the, for square footage? Where do you draw that line? That's the question.
Is there a recommendation that you guys have on a, on a standard size, you know, space that we see in this town on a lot, that size? I don't know that much, like, I don't know what the norm is.
So it could be, depending on what you want to do. And if you want to restrict both building depth and the size of the building, that's one thing. Typically, in many zoning ordinances, they will make things over 5,500 square feet a conditional use, because it goes from being basically a small development to a larger development. So I didn't just pull 5,500 square feet out of thin air. That is a number that is typically used for that type of review because 5,000 square feet is something that is smaller in scale, which is why I gave you the Fort Thomas Build, the independent school building.
The audience didn't get the benefit of hearing what I heard. What if the maximum? What, if the maximum 125 by 75 would create, how many square feet?
9300.
So that would be, but if he did 75 by 125, it's 9,000?
375.
375 square feet on one floor.
And then it's a conditional.
So that, again, that would be a conditional use at that point.
Right.
Because if they exceeded the square footage. And then if he made it two stories.
That's another.
That's, you know, 20,000 square feet. So again, that's a much larger building, and would have to be in the Board of Adjustment. The only thing I would say to you, and I do not want to add any more confusion to this discussion. But. Is, I mean, you do have a designer report because of the strategic appropriates being required. In the core, we have some defined design standards that are in the code that govern buildings, and they govern percentages of window coverings and building divisions and all of that. Supporting is not, those design standards do not apply in supporting subdistricts. They only apply in core. So again, I don't want to add another variable to this conversation, but perhaps we should add another variable to this conversation.
Is it a way to just abandon all the way through?
To me, sure, I mean, we can do that. The reason that we did not do that is because the core is your traditional area, and it is more retail and more non-residential in its nature. Whereas the supporting has all of these homes, and suddenly trying to create design standards that work in both situations is difficult to do. So that's, that was the rationale behind it. But don't, you know, don't undersell the designer report.
Are you voting?
Yes. So again, let's, let's, let's talk about all the divisions on site. My idea of trying to limit this to three variables is not working. So, let's talk about height, and width, and depth as a combined conversation in the supporting subzoning district. Let's at least narrow the focus that way.
We're asking, 35 feet in the core, you said that if we went there, that would make the structures in the core non-conforming.
Virtually all of them.
Okay. So now what does that exactly mean? Like to Andy's point, if it's an existing building, it doesn't really mean too much? It would be, it would come into play with a core down?
Correct. And again, you're going to, because of the way you measure height, you measure to the top of the roof. You don't measure any other way. So you measure to the top of the roof. And so the further you bring the height down, the buildings are going to look, start to look more squatty because of the width of your right of way.
Now we're in decrease from, that I'm just thinking to, we've decreased from 10 to 10. So there's really a bit too.
That's only 10,000.
Right, that would say a worst-case scenario.
Again, that 5% of those, all they have, is the end effect, if there's an issue.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just saying worst-case scenario.
So I'm going to throw this out there, and y'all can throw tomatoes at me if it's a bad idea. But we're at quarter till nine, and I'm seeing a lot of confusion and exhaustion. And there are a lot of variables left. What if we came back to you and just took the fifth third bank example, and the lot next door, and played out some of these scenarios, and showed you how wide, you know, how many buildings could be there, the amount of square footage, and it was, you know, 125 feet deep and two stories tall? So this becomes a little more real to you. I mean, I don't want to delay this process inward and melding, but I, I'm feeling that there's, we're not having, it would help this discussion if we had an example. Is that a bad idea?
I think the planning commission kind of is on the same page. I think it's council that really is concerned about there not being a unanimity of opinion here. I mean, we've gone through this, I think we were comfortable with what was put together. And, and having a non-conforming use also does mean it's more difficult to improve that building. I mean, just because it's existing, non-conforming, and it burns down, and you can build it again. I mean, banks do not loan a loan money to approve a non-conforming use. So there is, there is some downside to that, just as far as being an existing building goes. And that's one of the big things we've been trying to do, is limit the number of non-conforming uses in town, just because people want to improve their buildings. So that is important, aren't you?
Banks and insurance companies are trending. I don't see them getting more qualified.
That's the truth. Is everybody on the same page over there on this briefing? You guys all on the same page on this? We wouldn't have given it to you if we weren't. Well, I mean, they said five out of six won it. That doesn't mean that, you know what I mean?
I want to, I want to take this opportunity to thank you all so much, because you guys got a lot of experience, you've done a great job, you spent a lot, a lot of time, and you don't get paid, just kind of, you don't get paid much. Seriously, seriously, I really appreciate what you're doing.
I mean, and just to draw, so for the supporting subdistricts, just to draw the parallel with the third, so it's kind of the same discussion. So U S Bank isn't going to be there forever, neither is the Guardian Savings Bank either.
Right.
So you have to envision what, for those lots, either individually or combined, that, those aren't going to be there 20 years from now either.
Right.
So, you know, those, you know, in the supporting districts, that's, those are the most likely lots that would be redeveloped.
And the only thing I would say to that, is the more restrictions you place on these lots, the more likely that lots are going to be combined, and there'll be a larger development. Because in order for the pro forma to make sense, you have to, let's use Guardian Bank and U S Bank. Because the buildings can only be 75 feet wide, in order to make it work, they're going to buy boat parcels and tear down boat buildings. And that happens, it's an inverse relationship. So the more restrictions you put on it, the more likely you're going to get a larger development.
I think that's been like my concern, like talking to you all, that's kind of where I don't, what I don't want to happen, and where your expertise is. If you feel like there's a lot of restrictions already in place to eliminate some of these factors, that gives me a little bit more, you know, sense of security with this meeting overall. But, so, okay, I just.
Well, and that's why, this is, you've gone through all this. The issue of the 35 feet or 40 feet, 35 feet doesn't make any sense. It makes things all non-conforming. 40 feet is what we have out there now. We don't want short, squatty buildings put in there. That doesn't make any sense. I know there's some folks that would just want everything shorter, that.
Do we have buildings taller than 40 feet?
The only building we have taller than 40 feet is One Highland. I think it's 44.
Henry, show them that's taller than 40 feet.
Zone is 37, and then, and then.
What's that still?
The Highland Theater.
The Highland Theater is about 38 feet at the front. But as you head toward the back of the building, where the fly tower is, it's 50 feet.
So we still have non-conforming, non-conforming buildings even if we made it 40 feet?
Well, you would at least have two, which would be One Highland and 18 North.
Like, so we have non-conforming buildings, and I will be too.
Yes, but you are limiting.
I don't understand why there's any interest at all in making 35 feet one. It would not look like everything else in town. It doesn't make any sense. 40 feet is what they're recommending. That's what the rest of the houses are in the 37 to 44 feet range. That, that makes the most sense, so.
Yeah, and I'll just say too, I mean, you know, I'm probably not going to try and die on this hill, but the 40 feet to me, and I have talked to several people in town, and I've got, I've got Mrs. Maggio's letter right here that says 35 feet or 40 feet. And, and I know it's sensitive, because, you know, there's signs up with 35 feet, and I understand that. At 40 feet, we're dramatically coming off of where we are today. And I'm not speaking with any personal or financial interest, let me make that very clear. I don't want to get impeached. But in regards to, in regards to the Pendry Building, it sounds to me, even if we go to 40 feet, we're not, that, that building's going to be non-conforming regardless, because it's going to be 40, if it were to burn down, it'll be a 40-foot maximum height with a two-foot potential variance, if necessary, for a rebuild. So it's not conforming regardless. So the point of what I'm saying is, and it sounds to me like we have more discussion to have about the height issue, but I thought 40 was a really solid compromise. And, and some of the people who I've talked to in town, not all of them, of course, said, well, 35 feet to me makes sense. And I explained my position as I am now, and they said, well, actually, you know, you know, I think that does make sense. That helps to have less non-conformity. And, and like I said, I just think it's a really good compromise. I would urge us as a council, think about it hard. I definitely think we need to take into consideration what planning commission has to say on all fronts, including the height. But I don't want to let the, a couple feet here or there wind up being something where you decide, well, I'm not going to vote for this, or I am going to vote for this. I mean, let's, let's have some common sense here, and I'm not talking to anyone in particular.
No, I think, I think you don't think.
You know, it's a healthy conversation. But that's just, that's the way my mind works through this whole thing. And I'm sure we're not, we're obviously not making any decisions tonight, but that's my, kind of, how I think about it in my two cents right now, for what it's for and it's worth.
I think that's, I love your comments, it's great. And the reality is, these guys have experience in all this. Some of us have some experience in some of the areas, but these, these folks have really good experience in all this area. And I think we should be deferring to their suggestions for this in most cases. That doesn't mean we can't review the things and make changes along the way, but I think you're getting tired of going over this over and over again.
So, so are we.
I mean, one of the things I guess I just threw out there is, I mean, 35 feet is your residential height limit. So if you're making it 35, it's the same as every house in the city.
Yeah.
So, you know, do you give any leeway for a commercial building that's greater than the height of a house?
35 feet is, is much more.
All right, so let's.
I mean, what do you guys think of 40 feet? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with 40. I mean, I'm, I think I'm okay with 40 feet. I don't know, I think Ben did a nice job there. I mean, thank you for being honest about not having any interest in those. That's all I ask of anybody sitting on council or elected.
I mean, 40 feet, two and a half stories does prevent a lot, it's reduction of what they currently have right now. I mean, and then I liked Lisa's set about maybe restricting it to 35 feet, 40 feet for the pitched roof or the top. What did you say about that?
So you could, if you want to restrict the number of stories, which is the next conversation, then you could do that based on the roof structure, right? So if it's a flat roof, it can only be two stories. And if it's a pitched roof, in 612 pitch, then it's two and a half.
I think that gives a look and a feel that you are, you are talking about a lot of people.
I, I agree with that. I would just want there to be density restrictions.
So I think we need to come back to that. I think we need to have a continued conversation about the size of developments, and how we want to regulate that. Do we want to regulate it by building depth and conditional use? Or we want to do a maximum dwelling unit? I think that's a conversation we need to continue having. But this is what I can hear. 40 feet in the core and supporting, two stories if it's a flat roofed building, and two and a half if it's a pitched.
I think that keeps the character, the height, the density. I think it, I think it adds a lot of value.
All right.
It's a improvement from where we are today. And I agree, it's something that we can mostly agree on, so we'll preserve and put it in a much larger place than before.
So we're at five till nine, and I think we need to have some examples and continue this conversation. Am I wrong about that?
No. How much, how much longer, how much more do we have? We have quite a bit.
You have all.
Anybody in a break? I mean.
I, I, you have all of Midway, and we have year olds. And I, and I'm not sure that it's wise to continue that conversation much later than now. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to talk all night about zoning, because that's what I do.
No, I'm fine.
Is this a zoning and planning meeting? Is this our meeting?
This is your meeting.
It's, I moved to a joint, a.
Before we do that, let's talk about. Let's talk about our next steps. If we're going to get back together again to have, to continue this conversation, when do we want to do that?
As soon as possible. How are you?
Preferably after the 4th of July. Probably has to be that way anyway. Can we do it after the 4th? I'll take some time off next week.
Yeah, I'll miss it.
Kevin, what was the date we had a time?
So if we decided not to continue, we talked about some dates, things were partially based on leases availability and whatnot. I think initially, we talked about June 26, which is next week. It sounds like there's a few conflicts. I, I don't know with summer vacations, where we cut off the limits. But I think after that, unfortunately, based on, I think partially, leasing schedule was literally July 31st. But I, you know, I don't know what everybody else said.
Unless it's continuing, let's just get it done.
It's July 31st for everybody. Yeah, I mean, I think once we get to a certain level, we're going to stop thinking.
I would start to stop thinking on that.
Right, so July 31st, can everybody look at their calendar and see if that is?
Is it the planning commission, or are we the 17th of July, our next meeting?
And I'm, I'm.
I understand, I think that's what, I think that's what we stand for on the calendars. I'm going to say, 40 is the number to show the current image on 17 AM 31.
So you're on time.
I don't think so. I'm on 31st.
31st, 31st. Andy?
We were considering that.
31st? No, July. 31st?
Yes, sorry.
Eric?
Yeah, I don't know what I was doing.
I'm good.
This is the easiest I've ever scheduled a meeting? Oh, you guys weren't on there, that's right. Because that was going to be our public hearing, that's what it was. So you're available?
I am not.
You are not? You are not? You are?
Jerry, are you available?
Yes.
Well, that's only three though.
Jerry, I have to say, you all feel comfortable with what has been presented so far. So this is mainly us getting up to speed with what you all have already recommended.
Make sure we don't have a war. We're not voting on it.
You're not voting on it, you're there now.
It's just a discussion. Would that be okay with you two? I know it stinks. Or should we try to, I mean, we could also try to see if we can get another date where we can get everybody.
Confidence of the rest of the commission.
I'd be fine doing it, and again, another time, we had so first maybe try.
I just know when we try, it's bad enough with six council members.
You all would be okay not taking the next meeting?
That would be all right with you. Okay. Okay.
It is what it is.
Well, we'll plan at 6:30 on the 31st.
It's Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
There was a motion on the floor, do I hear?
Wait, wait, are we, if there's two people, I do have a question. If there's two people there that can't make it, are we allowed to be with them to discuss anything outside of this or not? If we want their opinions on stuff?
This is, this is no longer going to be the public planning commission here, for purposes of acceptance or anything. To me, there, this is now going to be, I think it should be our public meeting, and, and they're showing up as, as interested.
No, I'm talking about outside here, so if I've got two people in my meeting, if I just happen to want to meet with them, that's.
You're saying, you're saying Derek, right?
No, no, no. No, he says he wants to. I want to cut off his side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, you put, see, I mean, everybody's tired, you put the hat on. Is that, is that okay for us to meet with anybody individually to get their opinions?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as there's not foreign money.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know how it worked. Somebody reached out to each other, we covered it like that.
Well, I wanted to follow the thought, because I was, I was wrong.
I did want to mention just one thing about, just in terms of the procedure, how this will actually materialize after the hearing. Or, I'm sorry, it should have been the hearing, but in preparation for the hearing, the city will actually have to mail out notices to every affected property owner in the city, and invite them to the hearing. So that process is, is not a simple thing, I guess, is all I'm saying.
No, and, and let me clarify what affected property owner means. That means you own a property that is, the zone is being changed on.